School Board Meeting, which is one day after our typical meeting date. And as we have come together for the meeting to be called to order, I would like to ask us to approve the agenda. Under B, you have the agenda before you, members of the board, and a motion to approve the agenda that we have before us today would now be in order.
I move that we approve the agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Carter, for making the motion, seconded by Ms. Morrison, that we would approve the agenda for the Wednesday, November the 4th, School Board Meeting. Is there any question or unreadiness? Hearing now, we will call for the vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. And at this time, we will now stand for our pledge of allegiance. What a wonderful opportunity to do that today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We want to thank our viewing public for being a part of our viewing audience. And we do believe that tonight's meeting will be very instructive and will bring great levels of clarity regarding several matters that are of extreme importance as we seek to do the best we can to provide public education to the LCS family. With that being said, we will now move to item C, which is our area of public comment. And I do want to indicate, in accordance with our policy, procedurally, persons desiring to address the school board shall submit an advance request in writing to the superintendent no later than 12 noon of the Wednesday preceding the regular board meeting or by signing the public comment form, which shall be available in the public 15 minutes before the meeting starts. Each person requesting to speak shall identify the subject he or she wants to address, and if he or she represents a group, he or she must identify the group. Due to limited seating, members of the public are encouraged to sign up in advance to speak during public comments. Per school board policy, the board will allow up to 30 minutes for public comments. Individuals will be invited to speak in the order they signed up. Individuals may be asked to wait outside in the lobby until it is their time to speak. And I want to put emphasis, return to the lobby after speaking. All individuals are strongly encouraged to practice social distancing and wear a face covering over the mouth and nose. Tonight, we are grateful that we have one public comment in writing. And so I will read this at this time, and then I will indicate those who will be speaking to us publicly. This is coming to us from Skylar Dempsey Hansen, Dear LCS School Board, in response to the upcoming deadline to submit an LCS learning model change request, I would urge you to consider revising policy during the winter third wave of COVID-19. Many families will travel over the holiday season, and that combined with poor ventilation in schools and crowding in hallways and public spaces as the weather grows cold is likely to greatly increase the risk to our children and staff of contracting COVID. Please consider changing the return-to-learn policy to require that families who travel to high-risk areas quarantine before returning to school unless a vaccine becomes available. Also, if the city of Lynchburg becomes a high-risk area, I urge you to consider moving all students back to virtual-only learning until the risk decreases to a manageable level. Thank you for your dedication and commitment to making decisions in the best interest of our children's health, safety, academic, and social development. We thank you for that public comment. Persons appearing before the school board will not be allowed to campaign for public office or promote, and I put emphasis, private business ventures, and should not use profanity or vulgar language or gestures. Make comments about a public official or an employee that are not related to his or her official duties. Engage in behavior that disrupts the meeting or intimidates others or addresses the school board on issues that do not concern the services, policies, role, and/or responsibilities of the school board. Individual speakers shall limit their comment to three minutes, and if you are representing a group, you should limit your comment to five minutes. As this process unfolds, there are 30 minutes that have been allotted for this, and we will move forward in that regard. First person who has signed up for public comment tonight is Melissa Chesney, and we welcome her at this time. She is representing Transportation with the subject matter being salaries. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you. Good evening. Today, I would like to speak to you about salaries for transportation personnel, and the concept extends to all the educational support personnel as well as teachers. Here in Lynchburg, our living wage is significantly higher than the salaries paid to LCS employees. This is something that I believe is linchpin of your responsibility to change. Everyone in this room is making far above the living wage, and despite what you have said in the past, the city of Lynchburg has no say in how money is spent because it is against the Constitution of Virginia to do so, except for when it comes to the building maintenance fund. So, when you get, for example, $100 million for a school year, you have the final say in how that money is spent. So let's talk about how you spend it. A director, starting out, gets $70,000 a year. An administration staff person gets $100K a year. Principals get $75 to $100K a year. And your lowest-paid position by yearly salary is a bus assistant at $11K a year. Then it's the bus driver at $12.5K a year, followed by a student support assistant making $13.2K a year. These salaries are pitiful. And, to make matters worse, your payroll policies prohibit us from getting our full salary as we earn it. It is no longer possible to manage our own money. You keep it, and you don't pay us interest on that either, but dole it out in nice even payments, 22 or 24 pay periods a year. That means, for those of you who do not understand the significance, that on paper, it looks like I get paid far more than I do. I was not misleading anyone last month when I said my pay that I take home without any overtime is $396 twice a month. This needs to change. We need you all at the top to make some hard choices. You need to be courageous, and you need to do what's right. If the living wage in Lynchburg is for a single parent with one child, $52.5K a year, then we are paying our lowest-paid positions five times less than what they need to survive. So why should you care? Let me tell you why. A tired, overworked, and underpaid adult is a sloppy adult. They are not at their best in rest or emotional availability for the kids we are here to educate. They have no choice but to work multiple jobs, and this means they aren't there for the children they need to take care of at home either. If you think, oh, well, an uneducated person deserves an uneducated pay, might I remind you, university loans are astronomical, and you are a human being. Let's start from a place of everyone working deserves a living wage. This is what is right. And let's also remember that this is taxpayer money that funds the school system. This is not a profits-driven corporation. There is no reason why you cannot decide to take funds from positions earning far above the living wage and distribute that to those making far below the living wage. And let's remember that when you do present your budget to the city of Lynchburg, you will be in a far better position if you can make the honest statement that you took funds to ensure that all of your district employees are making a living wage than if you could not say the same. The overall reason why LCS cannot keep staff is because you pay a pitiful salary, and then your policies and procedures make everyone's job more difficult. I would like you to draw your attention to these papers here. This is a stack of bus routing schedules for just a few drivers, like four, since the school started back. This stack represents how many times our schedules will change, and I don't know how it works in other jobs in the district, but I would assume that this many changes to what a person needs to do is problematic, to say the least. A bus driver and their assistant have to have this schedule memorized. They are responsible for every single student wanted, and we currently are chasing each other across town having multiple buses going to the same exact stops at the same times going to the same schools because those lists of students that do not need transportation are not getting from the schools who are keeping the information to the dispatchers so that it looks, again on paper, like each bus is carrying 20 students to each school. It doesn't matter if the bus driver goes in to talk to the dispatcher and say, hey, these five kids are all I'm transporting or not. They refuse to move students until they get official word from the staff at the schools. This is a good example of the policy points that make everyone's job a headache. And this is why you have the highest turnover in staff in the entire central Virginia area. If I have said it once, I have said it a thousand times. You cannot treat us like garbage and pay us poverty wages because that's what you are doing. If anyone in this room or watching this on YouTube or TV thinks that being a bus driver or a driver's assistant is easy, then I encourage you to come down and go through the extensive training and work here. I am confident that you will quickly change your mind and agree. We are not paid enough to deal with this nonsense.
I want to thank both of you for coming. Thank you so very much. Our next speaker for tonight will be Mr. Robert Flood, who is representing Virginia Organizing. Mr. Flood? Welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
Good evening.
I want to thank y'all for letting me speak once again. I hope everybody stands safe. Keen today to talk about SROs in the school system. Just a suggestion that I was thinking about. How can we have returning citizens maybe volunteer to help the SROs in the school system? Recognize the things that they might see that SRO wouldn't see. To diffuse a situation instead of escalating, giving it escalate into something that have a young man end up in detention home or end up kicked out of school. And we was talking about in the group session at Virginia Organizers, how can we help returning citizens being a part of the school right now? Everybody needs help. We got something that nobody looking for, and it's affecting every single person in this country. And if any way that returning citizens could help, you know, make it better for young people, especially ones look like me that end up in detention home or end up kicked out of school or end up being suspended or even just don't want to listen to nobody, they have a bad job. And that's the thing about, you know, we talk about all the time. How can SROs as, you know, police be all in the community, communicating with young people or anybody just to get to know each other? You get more respect then because they know who you are. They don't trust me, they... I don't care where you see them or what they do. They have no trust in SROs or police. But if you had somebody that could recognize, you know, situations and maybe being a partner with some of the people that works in these schools that's returning citizens or just people in general to volunteer to go up there to help, make the situation a little bit better than what it is. It's just a suggestion. And I think that, you know, it would help not only young people, that's males, that don't have a father figure at home. A mother is their father and mother. When they see somebody look like me, you know, trying to help them least, trying to guide them the right way, giving them positive things to think about instead of going the wrong way, you get a little bit better reaction. And myself, just thinking about working at detention home for six years, working with young people that came from everywhere, white, black, Mexicans, men, whatever. I mean, they done something in the detention home. Then you find out they done something real petty because they, you know, got around the wrong people, wrong places, and around the wrong things. So any way that any returning citizens or anybody that's trying to volunteer to help these young people, we need it. Just a suggestion. Now, thank you for giving me the time to speak.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Flood.
Yes, sir.
Our next speaker, representing conservative parents of Lynchburg, is Mr. Andrew Glover.
Good evening, Lynchburg City School Board. My name is Andrew Glover. I'm an LCS parent and a representative of the Conservative Parents of Lynchburg Group, currently representing over 170 Lynchburg City families. To begin with, I'd like to read a section of the Virginia Department of Education's phased reopening instructions released by Governor Northam. I quote, "Students should use cloth face coverings when at least six feet of physical distancing cannot be maintained, as is medically and developmentally appropriate. Schools may choose not to require their use when physical distancing measures cannot be effectively implemented." End quote. In a separate section of that same document, Governor Northam's task force states exactly what those distancing requirements are when it states, "The World Health Organization advises that schools maintain a distance of at least one meter, approximately three feet, between everyone present at school. Additionally, the American Academy of Pediatrics says spacing as close to three feet may have similar benefits if students wear face cloth coverings and who do not show symptoms of illness. Therefore, in school settings, schools are encouraged to aim for six feet of physical distance to the greatest extent possible. However, if six feet of distance..." However, if six feet of distance is not feasible, schools should implement a combination of face coverings and a minimum of three feet distance between everyone present." That's that section from that document provided by the Governor's task force. So in summary, what that, the Governor Northam, the VDOE, the WHO, and the APA all states is that schools can either have a six-foot of distance with no masks or three feet with masks. In communication with our group last month, Dr. Crystal Edwards indicated that LCS had made the decision to disregard VDOE's allowance of the three-foot space when wearing masks and instead maintain the greater six-foot distance. We were also led to believe that that adherence to the six-foot target when three feet is not, when three feet of space is allowable by VDOE is why our students cannot return to schools five days a week per previous COVID requirements. Ostensibly, this is because classrooms are too small with LCS adherence to the greater distancing requirements. As such, I'd like to request that, given the greater distance that LCS has decided to adhere to, that LCS students be allowed to remove their face masks when six feet of distance is maintained. This is primarily in a classroom setting where the students are seated in front of a desk and are not expected to move around during the duration of the class. This request is not unreasonable and fully complies with the VDOE and Governor Northam's reopening guidance. Under that guidance, VDOE recognizes that face coverings are not developmentally appropriate for many kids, not to mention the recent studies that have demonstrated that kids are at a lower risk of both catching and transmitting the COVID-19 virus. Finally, perhaps one of the most important indicators as to why this is not an unreasonable request is that most adults cannot even make it seven straight hours wearing a mask. Recently, many of our group members have indicated that masks have even started to be required in outdoor recess periods at some schools, meaning the one break that their kids are supposed to have isn't even happening. So I reiterate that we are requesting that, since LCS refuses to offer face-to-face learning five days a week because you are disregarding the three-foot allowance from Governor Northam, from VDOE, from WHO, and from the American Academy of Pediatrics, that our children be allowed to remove their face masks when they are seated at their desks or in other situations where they are able to maintain six feet of distance from their peers, teachers, and staff members. That's the end of my comments. I have actually extra time. I do want to point out, it was made aware to us earlier last month that there's over a thousand kids potentially missing school every day, and I encourage the school board to very much dive deep into those numbers. I understand that attendance has been hard to track, so I encourage you to at least press and get answers as to what kind of participation students are actually seeing, because if it's true that we have a thousand kids who are not participating, that should be of amazing concern. A thousand kids out of school potentially, so please look into that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glover. Do want to remind the public that we are strongly encouraging, of course, that is what it is, that individuals will have their face coverings when they appear before the board, and I am asking that whatever staff we have available could make sure that that area is taken care of appropriately. We have one other speaker who will need to speak without a mask, and that is Consuela Mosley. She's speaking as an individual for SROs. Ms. Mosley?
Good evening, everyone. I'll be speaking on the SROs. My main concern are the SROs that last year we noticed that we did have one wonderful SROs, but we also had another SRO that used excessive force and charged minority stores with assault and battery and disorder of conduct. We need more mental health and therapists at our school because these officers, their mentality are always acting as police officers rather than a support person that can deescalate without force. The money can be used for a better service for our student to deescalate for when the students are having problems or having something at home. We never know what these kids go through. So sometimes it's better we have people that can talk to the students to see what is really going on. We don't know when the kids leave the home, whether they lost a parent, got bullied, or somebody in the family got shot. So we need more support or like a grief service, because sometimes we don't know these kids grieving and they act out. So my concern is, I think we need better services to help our students to cope with more problems better than the SROs. In my years with my kids, I'd rather see DARE, because with DARE, you'll have a better relationship with the officers and the students, and plus, they talk about drugs. So even though DARE was in elementary, I think DARE could be used in middle, elementary, middle, and high school, and that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Mosley. That concludes our public comment section for today, and once again, if there's anyone who could make sure that area is appropriately handled for future speakers, I would appreciate it. Under item D for our agenda, we have two items, and item number one will be our September 2020 financial report. Dr. Edwards.
Absolutely, and Ms. LaConage is here to go over the report, so welcome, Ms. LaConage.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm going to present the financial report through September 30th. The operating budget is the same as the adopted at ninety-eight million, one oh eight, one ninety-one. The revenue received to date, we've received eighteen point five two percent of our revenue. The expenditures to date is nineteen point one four percent. The expenditures, including encumbrances, which is all the contracts, open POs, your contract and benefits for your salaries, is sitting at eighty-three point nine five percent. We have, I've provided the revenue attachment and the expenditure attachment. These were presented at the Finance Committee meeting so that we could sort of do a deeper dive to see if they had any questions. One thing that I did want to present tonight that we were unable to present at the Finance Committee meeting because this was just released, I had mentioned at the last board meeting that we were waiting for a new calc tool once the special session had ended, and that actually came out on Friday, and what we were anticipating did occur, the sales tax. If you go back to when we were building this budget, they kept the sales tax that was pre-COVID, and we thought that was too high, and they did lower that. So the sales tax that was originally budgeted has been lowered one point seven million. Now, good news is that they did increase our SOQ funding and increase our incentive funding, so it is basically a wash. That does not get us out of being mindful and watching our ADM. That just puts us back to sort of a level playing field when you look at the direct calc tool, and we are going to continue to monitor our ADM, knowing that we still have in January, we were told that they're going to go back and look for that ADM, hold harmless provision, but we want to be prepared if that doesn't occur. And if it doesn't, we still have the original CARES funding that we had intentionally held just for this purpose. Again, other than that, everything else had been presented to the Finance Committee meeting, but if you have any questions, please let me know.
Members of the board questions. Dr. Gupta, and I do want to remind all the board members that this meeting, Dr. Edwards has demonstrated for us how each item is aligned with strategic, comprehensive strategic goal number three, fiscal responsibility. Dr. Gupta?
Could you explain that seven million dollars you just mentioned, is it, they're reducing the sale tax revenue, which you used to get by seven million dollars?
One point seven.
One point seven, because in the sheet you have for revenues, I see year to year, both sale tax and the lottery revenues have gone up for this month of September.
Correct. They have been holding steady, but if you recall, they have really increased that projected budget for sales tax for this year, and they did step it back. So we're going to continue monitoring it. Sales tax is one of those things that aren't guaranteed. It could come in higher, and it has in the past. It's just not one of those things that the state will guarantee, so we will continue to monitor it. It was a blessing that they did, when they lowered that projection, that they put the additional SOQ and the incentive funding in place.
So could you use the SOQ funding for general expenditure?
Yes, it's part of your, the basic aid went up, and also the, it was actually a new, in the incentive area, it was actually a new line item, and it was stated it was the COVID-19 local relief payment. And again, that came out on a Friday, so we're going to dive into it to see if there's any certain criteria, but when we were looking at it, it looked like it was just to assist with your basic aid, your SOQ funding that had been reduced.
Other question, did you have a follow-up question, Dr. Gupta?
I do. In the revenues, as I was looking, because those are the key going forward, the JRT Junior ROT has gone up year to year down by thirty thousand. So are they even causing these things to slip out or?
We actually had a change in personnel cost, and we get reimbursed for a portion of that, but we actually had a staffing change that resulted in that reduction.
So it's purely reimbursement of your expenses?
It's not a hundred percent reimbursement. I think it's, it might be fifty percent. I'd have to verify that, but they do contribute, and we get monthly payments on that. The payments were going down, but when we tied it back, the contract payments were going down. It was a different person in that job.
Dr. Carter? Did you have a question?
No, I didn't.
Oh, you did not? Okay. Anyone else have a question for Mr. Conage? All right. Thank you for the fine work that you are doing, and we'll hear from you, I guess, later. At this point, we will now move into item two, which is something that is very important. That's our CARES funding update. Dr. Edwards?
Certainly. So picking up where Ms. LaConage just stated, you have a document, it's also in the agenda, which is a quick one-page summary of the CARES funding that was made available to LCS, and it's, we numbered them in pretty much the order that the information about the funding came out. The first line was the first round of funding that we were notified about in May, and remember, at that time, that's when we were predicting the sales tax and lottery shortfalls. And one of the things that we did with that grant was we, an allowable use was to hold on to that funding for continuous employment of people that are, that were on staff. So when we wrote that application, and I also included it in the summary notes about approximately how many FTEs, that's an average, that we were holding on to that fund that has a two-year expiration. So as Ms. LaConage said, we're not out of the woods yet, so we were hesitant to do too much with it. We also included some more recent items now that we're in full swing of COVID, and I had mentioned this to several of you, that we have our own internal contact tracing team, but we did not hire anybody to do internal contact tracing. We had put those responsibilities on a staff, on several staff members to do. And as the COVID cases, when the quarantines tend to increase, and we also have more capacity of people in our buildings, as we've increased the number of staff and now students in our buildings, the responsibility of monitoring that is higher. So we also, in that area, are looking at possibly getting some assistance to do the contact tracing, and what we do internally is similar to what the VDH does, except we try to do it as fast as possible, notifying folks and doing the quarantine questions and finding out. So you will see some of that there, as well as contracted subs. We're real concerned about even going in the cold and flu season, that what happens if a staff member has to be out, and remember, normal cold and flu is probably a day or two or three. Cold and flu mixed with COVID and not knowing could be fourteen days, which we were already struggling with subs, but we put some funds in there for that. So that is the first round of funding. I know there was a lot of questions about that. Second round of funding actually came from the city when they received over seven million dollars, and they gave us two million of that, and we made a list of all the things that we purchased, including the Chromebooks for the third through fifth graders, eMisters, which you've seen demonstrated here, touchless water fountains, temperature scanners, lots of PPE, food delivery carts, and pretty much this money has an expiration of December 30th, so it's a spend first, and we're about ninety-nine percent spent on that. Some things are slow to come in across the country, like Chromebooks, but we distributed everything that we had so our kids would have it. Our third item after sometime in August, the city got a second round of over seven million of CARES funding, and some folks have asked whether or not we received any of that. The answer is no, so I did note that, even though we did not have that listed, but there may have been some misinformation that we did. Then in October, we were made aware of some funding that was competitive, so we had to apply for it, and that is the GEAR funding. And again, we put in our application late September, and in, I think, late first week of October, they notified us that we did receive, not what we asked for, we asked for a little bit more, but we did receive four hundred ninety-six thousand, four hundred ten sixty-seven cents. And I will note that on number one and number four, you will see two values. One is the total, and then one is our portion, and the other portion goes to the private schools, who we act as their fiscal agent. All their bills come through us, we process them. So again, when you see that money, just recognize we put under there what LCS's portion is, and you can see, that's where we purchased the remote learning platform for Keta Two, which was Seesaw, beyond the free version, some mobile hotspots for families. We originally had mobile hotspots for families in our number two application to the city, but because of the expiration date being December 30th, 2020, and at that time, we had a lot of questions whether or not, if we got a hotspot, what happens in January? Do the families keep it? Do what goes on? So they advised us to take it out. So we took it out. Later in October, with this funding, could get mobile hotspots, and again, hand sanitizer, PPE, face shields, and paying for some of the school nutrition workers. We've spent about twelve and a half percent of that money, having recently received it. We've budgeted for all of the money, but as far as what's been spent. And then, most recently, number five, in mid-October, we were made aware of some CRF funds, and again, these funds are allocated to assist with COVID-related expenditures. Again, a lot of focus on PPE, cybersecurity, and any transportation needs that you might have, and as of the time we printed this, we had not received the funds. They expire, this is going to be a tough one, they expire December 30th, 2020, and you must have items in, not just encumbered, so you can't order anything that's going to be backordered into the next school year, and that's one point three, a little over one point three million dollars worth of funds. So that is a quick summary of the COVID funds that we have received. Ms. LaConage, did I miss anything? You want to add anything in there?
Just a minor point of clarity, just because we had an updated suit memo on the number four, and again, it's minor, but I just want to always be transparent. They reduced it just a small, like six hundred dollars, but LCS's portion went down to three sixty-nine, two forty, point five five, and that was the updated suit memo on October 30th.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LaConage, and thank you, Dr. Edwards. As board members begin to speak, I am very appreciative of this CARES funding summary, and I'm sure that it is widely circulated to council and other partners within the community so that everyone can accurately understand what has happened and what is going on with the funds that we have received, and I'm very appreciative of this informational opportunity. Dr. Gupta?
So I appreciate for all this information, and I know many of these things are required and essential and needed to be taken, but one piece which I see is missing is the achievement gap in Black and Brown students and socially, economically, on the, you know, on the weaker parts of our student body, which is very well documented that COVID with this remote learning has caused it, and I don't see, I see a lot of things being bought, but nothing to take care of that achievement gap. What are we doing as a school division to make sure our students are ready for their future classes, you know, so nobody's left behind? Could we use some of this funding for those, reducing that achievement gap by mentoring programs and other things?
I am so glad you brought that up, because we just had a conversation about that and looking, go... And looking, go back up to number one, because that's where our pot of money is sitting in terms of the whole pot. And again, we were kind of waiting until we had a better sense of where we were with sales tax and lottery. You heard Kim say, the hit was not as bad as we anticipated. So we have been in conversation about what are our targeted needs for specific children. Right now, what we're doing is looking at our room capacity, where we have available seats to try to get any kids who are significantly at risk, who have not been in in-person learning, and in-person learning. And then we want to move to what you're saying, some mentoring programs, some targeted tutoring programs. And we are probably going to, unless there's some more around the funding that's coming, which I'm hopeful, going to use some of our number one funding to make sure that we have identified those children and what their needs are. And we don't want to wait for a summer program. So it's not hold and wait for summer school. It really is at, this is what we're working on right now. Now that we are back in school, I think Cohort B for grades seven through 12 will have their, what, second day of school already or something like, tomorrow, right? Because they haven't even, they only have one day of school. So they'll be on day two tomorrow, and we'll have a better sense of who we need to target.
Chair recognizes Dr. Gupta for follow-up on this matter.
So I appreciate, but my point is that this is a very short-term window before, I don't want a lost generation of our students, you know, who are completely left behind. And I don't want the school division to, if you hire people, it becomes a fixed cost. These are one-time funds, so they are variable costs. Are there resources in community which we can use, just like Mr. Flood pointed out? Somebody these students look up to, are willing to listen to, who could be the role models, mentors in guiding them through? It may not be formal teaching, it may be informal mentoring in terms of doing their work what they're supposed to be doing on a day-to-day basis.
And that is what we're working on, a little bit of both, because we recognize the social-emotional piece of what has happened during COVID. But we also don't want to miss, particularly with our younger students, the need to read and having some literacy specialists, so to speak, who can help with the instruction in reading and in math literacy or whatever those content areas. So doing both of what you're saying is where we are right now. Those are our conversations right now. Originally, it was, how can we get it up and running? How do we get everybody the PPE they need? How do we get our buildings ready for it? How do we feed our children? How do we transport our children? And now, that's on autopilot, and we are shifting to exactly what you're talking about. And again, these funds can be used for summer programs, but we don't want to wait for summer. We want to do some stuff right now, whether that's a boot camp a Saturday or a consultative tutoring, some extra things. Because I get what you're saying about having additional staff. We don't want to grow staff, but we may want to pay people for additional hours to work with children.
Dr. Gupta and any of the members of the board, if you feel so inclined around other ways that you do not see listed here, please share that with Dr. Edwards. Achievement gap matters, all of that is so important, because we care about these kids and we want to use the funds to tackle the most important issues. And with what we're facing, you don't want to take a butter knife into a gunfight. And we are dealing with some serious challenges here. So we're thankful for this money, and it'll be used appropriately. Anyone else on the board like to, Dr. Nillis?
I guess my comment is, in terms of the CARES funding for the extra work, I know things where we're at right now is kind of on autopilot, but there still needs to be a lot of planning with the intent eventually bringing everybody back. And maybe that's something where you could set up a task team, whatever, a dream team for that. But that's going to be weekend work. It's going to have to, I mean, the reality of it, that's going to have to be extra. And that could certainly be something I think that those funds could be spent on. And I know people are interested in at least kind of hearing what some of the thoughts are in terms of getting all the kids back, because that's what our goal needs to be. And that's the best way, I think, to address the achievement gap, is get the kids in school every day. But it's going to be tough to do that in the current environment.
Wow, that was powerful. Thankful for the brilliance around the table. Anyone else would like to raise a question concerning the CARES funding update of our financial report? Thank you so much, Ms. LaConnaught, for all of your great work. All right, this now moves us to our agenda, item E, Consent Agenda. And the chair is going to ask at this time if under E4, that we would pull E4, Human Resources Report Addendum Number Two, from the Consent Agenda, and vote on it separately. And the chair would like to entertain a motion for us to pull E4 from the Consent Agenda to vote on it separately after we've approved the other items under the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion for such?
A move that we pull item four, the Addendum to the Human Resources Report from the Consent Agenda?
Motion is made by Dr. Nillis, is there a second?
Actually, I don't need to make a motion, I object. Let's pull it and discuss it there.
Okay, well then that would be fine. It has been pulled that way, and all of you will be in agreement with that. Thank you so very much. Now, the Consent Agenda before us is going to entail item E1, our School Board Minute Meetings, School Board Meeting Minutes. And thank you, Ms. Day, for how you are developing those. Item E2, Human Resource Report, and you notice what that entails. Human Resource Report Addendum Number One, and you can see what that entails. And then we've heard discussions previously around item five, Instruction and Program Policy Updates. And you see those appropriate policies listed under Instruction and Program. And then item six, Fiscal Policy Updates. And you see the appropriate policies regarding that matter. And then item E7, Religious Exemption. And all the appropriate paperwork and the essential information that we need has been appropriately submitted. Is there a motion now to accept the Consent Agenda with the items that remained, items one through three and items five through seven?
A move to approve the Consent Agenda?
A motion to approve the Consent Agenda, seconded by Ms. Morrison. In unreadiness, questions, hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, a motion carries. And if you will now, we will deal with Human Resource Report Addendum Number Two separately. And I'm going to ask Dr. Edwards to lead us in that discussion.
Absolutely. So under this Addendum Number Two is the appointment of Mr. Steve Gatske as the Senior Director of Finance and Operations. Mr. Gatske is currently the Director of Facilities and Maintenance. He has been with us since 1995. He was instrumental in both the Heritage and Sandusky, Project Sandusky Middle School, Heritage High School, as well as all of our new gyms that were recently built. He sits on our team, our senior team, and most recently joined our conversation with our city manager as we looked to doing the facility studies, which we talked about doing an analysis of all, at least all of our elementary schools, if not including some of our secondary schools as we move forward with the future of Lynchburg City Schools. So I am recommending that Mr. Gatske be appointed to the position of Senior Director for Facilities, and I'm sorry, for Finance and Operations at this time.
All right, Ms. Morrison for a discussion?
I so moved, Mr. Gatske being appointed as the Senior Director of Finance and Operations.
All right, we've had a motion to support item four, Addendum Two, then seconded by Mr. Harvey. Any further questions, discussions? Hearing none, we call for the vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please state that. All right, and the motion passes. And Dr. Edwards, any further acknowledgements you want to make of that?
I just want to say congratulations to Mr. Gatske, and we look forward to working with the city on the facility study and the continued work that we've had with our gyms and buildings and grounds.
All right, thank you so much. All right, that now moves us appropriately to item F in our agenda for tonight. And always a joy to have our school representatives. I do want to acknowledge tonight that Dr. Brennan is now with us, our vice chair for personal matters. But he is helping tremendously in making sure that we get our mentoring program going for our reps and working very nicely with that. And tonight, we're grateful to have Jaden Scott with us from EC Glass, who will make a presentation tonight. Grayson Arnold is not able to be with us tonight, but will report accordingly in the future.
Hi.
Hello.
Good evening.
This is the PowerPoint presentation for EC Glass. And yeah, let's go ahead and get started. So the hybrid learning plan has been in place now, and I believe students started back last week. So I wanted to insert the schedule. And there is two consecutive days for cohorts. So Cohort A will go Tuesday and Wednesday, and then B will go Thursday and Friday. School will last from 7:35 to 1:35, and there will be a period per week for in-school learners. So our first week back, these are just some pictures that were taken from in-school. And I also reached out to a lot of different students to see how they were feeling about going back. So there are some quotes in there. Honestly, the feedback has been really good. Everybody's loving going back, they're loving being able to talk and socialize. And even though everything is separated, they're still enjoying being able to talk to their teachers, being able to see people. And so I really think that that's a great plus for everybody. And so I was talking with Ms. Flore and then other students and other teachers about what they've learned doing hybrid. And so we've seen that joining Zoom calls are really essential. Ms. Flore was really pushing this, that you need to join the Zoom calls, whether you're at home or if you're in class. It doesn't really matter if your teacher's doing a call and you feel like you need help. Join the call, that's what's really going to make this year not be as difficult as it could be. And so then the learning curve, Ms. Flore was also pushing this. It's a learning experience for everybody. Nobody has experienced this before, we have not been out of school in March for months. We don't really know what's going to happen. We're taking it day by day, but not only are students learning new things, our teachers are learning new things, our principals, all the staff. This is completely different. So we do want everybody to understand that it's not just y'all confused, it's everybody. And so for quizzes and tests, this was actually given to me by one of my friends that I reached out to. She made a really good point, I never even thought of it. Since there's only one period that she'll be in class, you only have like reading once a week in school, she did make a suggestion for teachers that you should only do quizzes and tests online and don't take away that one period teaching that they get to ask questions and be involved.
Great suggestion.
Don't use that for assessments, because now you've got a 45-minute test in a class where you could have had an hour to ask questions, right? So I thought that was great, and that's why I love reaching out, because I never would have thought of that. So I love that.
Who are you?
Okay, and then for the next slide.
Excellent.
Unity Day, EC Glass has been doing this for a while now, and I'm so glad that they continue even during COVID. So this was on October 21st, and it was just this big program and organization does it to spread awareness for bullying and prevention. This is the prevention month, so EC Glass did participate by wearing their orange and showing up and showing out, and I love that, just to show their awareness and to show that they are taken apart in everything going on. And then next, we have Freshman Welcome Week. This is actually my last topic, but we had freshman welcome week. And this was the week where the freshmen came back. We wanted to give them tours, and we wanted to let them feel like the ECG spirit. And I actually had the opportunity to give a tour. They are so excited, I love this. Everybody was super excited about coming back. We were giving out the freshman T-shirts. I'm pretty sure, this is their 100th year of being EC Glass. Don't hold me to that, but I'm pretty sure it's the year that they named EC Glass. So it's been EC Glass for 100 years now, so that's on the back of all the freshman shirts. And we had socially distant tours. And I was walking through the school, I was peeking in classrooms, because I wanted to see what everything looked like. The desks, everything is spaced out. They're doing a great job of keeping everybody walking on the right. There's barriers in the hallway so that you can't cross over. They want you to stay separate and stay safe, but still get that same feeling of being in school. And also, I meant to touch on this when it was takeaways. I didn't get to add it to the presentation, because the email actually came out after I made it, but that's okay. High schools have started doing attendance for each student. You will be required to join, no, you'll be required to answer a question on Google Classroom and to log on by 3:00 PM every day. If your student is not on there, you will receive a phone call or an email saying that they were not in class. So I think that that's another way that Glass is really trying to, you know, make sure everybody's there, everybody's present, because we do want everybody in school. And we know they can't be there physically, but we still want everybody to be able to do their work, everybody to be able to show up. So yes, this is for hybrid and virtual learners. If you're not on Google Classroom by 3 o'clock each day, you will be held accountable. You'll get your phone call to your parents and everything like that. And I'm pretty sure that's the end. Thank you guys for your time, and see you all next meeting.
Well, Jaden, I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but coming up next year, we have a gubernatorial race, and you could be one of the contributors. Excellent job.
Thank you.
Wow. Thank you for the insightful information. I'm sure all of our board members and staff will hold what you have said under advisement. Thank you so much, Jaden. All right, at this time, we will now move to our next item on the agenda, which is going to be item I. And under Unfinished Business, it brings us to our Return to Learn Up. Huh? Did I back up? Oh, just give something here.
The Committee Report. School Board Committee Report.
Okay, let me go back to this. All right, G. All right, Finance Committee Chair, had an excellent meeting the other day. And Mr. Harvey, would you go right ahead? And he'll be followed by Ms. Evans with the Legislative Advocacy Committee Chair.
Okay, good evening. The Finance Committee met Tuesday, October 27th at 3:30 PM. Dr. Carter, Dr. Nillis, and myself were present, as well as non-voting members, Dr. Coleman, Ms. Morrison, also joined by Dr. Edwards and Ms. LaConnaught, Dr. Brennan, Mr. Steve Gatske, is Angel Randolph, and Mr. Matt Smith. And Mr. Smith was the Lynchburg City Schools Health Insurance Rep. The committee covered several items during their meeting. An informative presentation regarding the LCS Health Insurance Program and how it is administered for LCS staff was presented by Mr. Matt Smith. He discussed healthcare cost trends, example plans offered by surrounding school systems, and answered previously submitted and in-person questions. One of the key takeaways is that LCS plan for our staff and employees is a very competitive cost and benefits package when compared to surrounding systems. Since planning for the 2021 year is already underway, Mr. Smith recommends that LCS review budgeting for the year 2022. So the Finance Committee will proactively place this review on the February 2021 meeting agenda. Moving forward, Mr. Smith will work with Ms. LaConnaught to provide the Finance Committee with quarterly reports, which the Finance Committee will then share with the board. That just kind of keeps us up to date on the insurance. Mr. Gatske was present, and he reviewed with the committee the CIP with a focus on the five-year plan. He also noted that LCS is planning to commission a facilities analysis of all school buildings. This was something that was endorsed by our city leadership as well. And I believe the CIP plan will be covered a little bit later in their agenda. Ms. LaConnaught reviewed the financial report for the first quarter, as well as CARES funding, and both of those were earlier presented to the board. So you have seen everything and up to date with what the committee received. Our next meeting will be November 24th at 3:30 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey, with a pleasure to attend the Finance Thank you, Mr. Harvey, with a pleasure to attend the Finance Committee meeting the other day. Before we move to the next committee, is any questions to Chair of the Finance Committee? All right, thank you, sir. Ms. Evans, I know that you have a robust agenda.
I gave you a packet. The only change on that, Chairman and I have swapped talking spots for the Zoom call, but that really is the only change. I just printed everything out one more time to make sure you had a copy of our agenda, everybody's part. I think the main thing, I mean, I think we're ready here. I've heard from most people, still waiting on a few, but I've heard from most people. I am going to do, I'm gonna come in and do it.
Here.
Yes, because my internet is spotty.
I'm gonna do it here.
So we will be in here, it'll start at 9:00, but I'll come in here probably at 8:30, and he's gonna work on getting a Zoom call thing set up because I'll have to send that at the beginning of the week to people. So I think we're okay on this. The thing that we still need to kind of talk about is the Partners in Ed, Education Foundation, and Beacon of Hope partnerships.
Okay.
And so in our meeting, we decided we would send an email to each one of these three groups explaining that we were wanting to have two people on board with their program to understand what their program was about, to be able to come back to the Board and talk about what they're doing, but not at the expense of Dr. Edwards having to come up with an agenda and being prepared for a meeting and adding something else to people's plate. So I emailed everybody and just said, what are your thoughts? This is what we're thinking. And it sounds to me like Beacon of Hope and Education Foundation, that's Jody Julek. Okay, so they both really want it separate from their monthly meetings. They said their board meetings are packed with stuff, and they're very excited about this idea. They will do the agenda, so we do not have to have that together. They will work on a calendar. They will, they're very excited about that. The, a recommendation that they both had that I found interesting is they also are very interested in bi-yearly or some point during the year, meeting of all three of these entities together so that they can share ideas. Beacon of Hope, Partners in Ed, and Education Foundation, which I just thought was interesting. They both asked for that outside of each other. I don't think they had any idea what we were emailing each other about, and they both asked for the same thing. So just something to think about. So when we, the only one I did not hear from Partners in Ed. So we assumed in our meeting, we had talked about the fact that you two are already with that group. So if it's okay with y'all, we're gonna leave y'all with that group. And I think y'all will stay the same way of going to the meetings and doing it that way. Beacon of Hope will be Kim and a fool. And Education Foundation, right now, we had Dawn, myself, and Dr. Brennan, which means not everybody is put on something. If you, if Dr. Nellis, Dr. Carter, Dr. Coleman, if somebody is like, I absolutely need to be on this committee, we can talk about that, and we can change anything. But that's where we were and are thinking on these three things, these three groups. And I don't think it, it sounds like it's gonna add a lot more work to people, but I do think it'll be nice to have it in and every one of those to have a better understanding of what they offer Lynchburg City Schools because they offer a lot. And I think the more we can know, the better.
The agenda is, they will be developing the agenda?
Yes, but you're also more than welcome to send. I was just trying to get to the point that I didn't want to lay something either on Dr. Edwards or somebody else from Lynchburg having to come up with an agenda.
If I forget, I'm just gonna, can I say it now? One item I'd like to see.
Yeah.
They, because they, right now, their entry point for schools to give, like if I graduate from school X, if it is sex-accredited, they will give me the financial aid, that stay local. But if it was not sex-accredited, that money was not allocated. But in July of 2020, the DOE came up with a regulation where national or regional accreditations are at par. So after that, are they planning to make any changes with this new DOE guidelines?
So that should be your first even. This is my first question for the meeting, and they already have a meeting date on the books. They are ready, Beacon of Hope. And I will send it, I'm gonna email Mrs. Hamilton tonight when we're done, as long as everybody agrees with the place where you are, if you're good being with Beacon of Hope.
And Ms. Towns gave me a document of that, so I can forward that to you.
I want to keep order in the meeting. But let me, Bill, first of all, you are answering these questions beautifully. But too, are you on Beacon of Hope?
I am.
Good.
Just know she, right?
Excellent, that's gonna give you a chance to really tackle that very significant point that you just stated that the Chair is asking you. Go Susan.
And pie works differently because we actually attend the board meeting.
Right.
And sit in on discussions and work. So that we're doing, we actually attend their scheduled meetings.
And I knew y'all were gonna be different with that one. And they don't, all three have to be the same. We tried to do what worked for every group. And made this an easy transition. We didn't want to make this difficult with board members coming into what they were already doing. And we, I really said to them, what is the best way we can slide into your program and learn about it without causing? But they, they both, these two groups wanted the extra meeting. They were very excited about this idea and very excited about having board members be more aware of what they're doing.
One of the things that I'm very thankful for is how each board member is engaged in something that is making our board the high-performing board and effective board that we need to be in. So I cannot speak for Doctors Carter and Nellis, but I'm fine with those who have been placed on each of the three entities. Chair Evans?
The only thing I want to add to that, that leaves three, and that's three alternatives, that I would like to put one with each of these in case somebody can't do something. I would like to have a backup if people are willing to do that.
You can talk to Dr. Nellis and Dr. Carter, and I'll be glad to serve wherever needed. But I'm, I think it's a good plan. It's been well thought out. It's been properly discussed with the superintendent and the committee meetings, and so I think it's a good thing. Any further questions for the Legislative Advocacy and Community Relations Committee? November the 13th is rapidly approaching. That appears to be moving very nicely. And then each of you engaging in your various groups. And also your schools, adopt the school piece, you should be working on that. Dr. Senha?
Going back to the breakfast with the legislature, so we all have these assignments to kind of present.
Right.
Our priorities. How much time are you allotting for that? Is that like a three-minute presentation?
That would be ideal, too, yeah. You know, there's some of these that are a little bit more involved just because of what it is. Like teacher recruitment, essentially, might take a little bit longer than mine because the African-American history education, we're saying we're supporting what they've already put in place. So some of them are a little bit shorter than the others. I think the most effective way you can say it in a condensed version is what we're looking for. So I don't want to box you into a time, but be mindful people aren't listening. And it's very quick, you can get distracted, you know, we just want to keep them on point. This is what's important to us. So I think the more we can not go off on tangents and make it super long and be very focused on what our points are, I think that's the most important.
Okay, thanks. That's what I was thinking, that's why I said three minutes, but I didn't know if, you know, if I prepare three minutes. And you were expecting 15.
No, no.
You know what I mean? Yeah.
We've gotta have time for follow-up questions.
And remember, last year, they asked a lot of follow-up questions.
Thank you, Dr. Senha, for that. That was very important. Anyone else need to know anything? Of course, you can feel free to call Chair Evans about the particulars for the November the 13th or any item that she brought up today. Thank you for your report. Thank you, Chair Harvey, for finance. These are two committees that are obviously engaged in robust activity, and we are very appreciative to your leadership and the sharpness in which you are tackling your assignments. And we'll now move now to item H, unfinished business. And this is very important, and we are very thankful to Dr. Edwards and the staff in moving us through this living with COVID-19 and all of the dynamics and what we're gonna need to do going forward as a school division and staying ahead of the game and messaging and all of that. I'm very proud of what is being put before us. And so, Dr. Edwards, could you please introduce this part? And of course, we know that Dr. Senha will give us some updates as well.
Okay. So first, let me just say thank you. I know she left to Jaden for her comments, which were just, she hit it when she said, this is new to all of us. And that is so true as we go through return to learn. So much has changed since this started in March, and it continues to change. We continue to be, to evolve with it. We continue to put something in practice, and just like she had suggestions up there, like, huh, okay, that might be worth considering. We'll go back to the drawing board and consider some of those. And that has been happening the entire time. Some of the things, some of the change that we've experienced has been the result of parents saying, hey, how about you push those lessons out on Fridays instead of Mondays? And we're like, well, we communicate on Mondays, but that's a very good point. Let's go back and make that change. Some have come from our staff in terms of making some suggestions about what would make it flow a little smoother. Some things we learned because we put them in play, and then we went like, oh, that didn't quite work out the way we thought it was gonna work out. So we had to go back and evolve. So each month, we're here to kind of give an update and, as always, address any pertinent issues that community may have, or families may have, students, staff bring up. So I have my normal team here. Ms. Pugh is here to talk a little bit about, and I think two things are a topic of conversation. Attendance, and you heard Jaden say that we have put in some additional parameters to take attendance because we really don't want to miss any students. It is really important, and going back to what Dr. Gupta said, we need to know that you're engaging. And if you're not, if, for what reasons you aren't, and then what can we do? Because we don't want that achievement gap, learning gap to widen. So we did put in some attendance parameters. We're gonna talk a little bit about that, as well as, you know, going along with what Jaden said. What should it look like when you're there with those precious moments in front with the teacher? So I'm gonna let Ms. Pugh take it away, and then we may have some other friends that might join us.
Thank you so much, Dr. Edwards, and good evening, board members and community. Please bear with us tonight as we have some important updates about return to learn. And so our update today is a little bit longer than usual. And I would ask that you hold your questions until the end. I am here speaking right now, and we'll give some updates, but I also have a team that's waiting outside in the lobby to share some additional information with you. So first, I want to thank all of our LCS staff and our families for their dedication and the school board for your dedication as well to our students during the first weeks of school. Our students have been transitioning from remote-only to in-person hybrid learning over the last four weeks, and we are grateful for everyone's cooperation and their flexibility as we made this transition. We started bringing, as you know, our youngest students back to in-person learning on October the 6th. And as of last week, our 7th through 12th grade students have joined us. And students are back in our schools and our classrooms. And I'm gonna steal a phrase from Danny Rule, who's principal at Dunbar Middle School. We have heartbeats back in our hallways, and I think that speaks volumes. We have a pivot team from the return to learn team that's been meeting weekly, sometimes twice a week, for the past month or so, six weeks, to work out the details, work through the details that have allowed us to get to this point in which we are at now. This team represents a wide range of division-level staff as well as school-level staff. And we've worked through a lot of details and had lots of conversation about things like transportation. How does that look? What does that work? How does that work? We've worked through staffing models at the elementary level, the middle school level, the high school level, and we had to have conversations and come back to the drawing board. Those representatives in those meetings have taken this information that we've discussed during our pivot team back to their schools to get input. We've also looked at instruction. What does that look like? We even had conversations about how do we handle teacher absences and how do we handle substitute teachers? So currently, close to 57% of our students are participating in hybrid learning and about 43% in remote-only learning, and that's across pre-kindergarten through 12th grade. Additionally, the pivot steam, excuse me, the pivot team started looking ahead to second semester. So you may be aware that last week, a communication went out to LCS families asking them to consider if they wanted to change their child's learning model option from remote-only to in-person learning for the second semester, which, by the way, begins on January the 19th. We have updated our return to learn page of our website with some FAQs regarding second semester learning options. And these were also shared in the family communications last week. And I want to highlight just a few of these that I think are really important. So the first question is, can I request a change in my child's learning model for the second semester of 2021? And the answer is yes, as long as you submit this request by November 16th, 2020. And then there are some more information and details below. And we also want to note, and this again is stated on the website, that this will be the last opportunity to make changes from remote-only to in-person learning until the end of the school year. Let me move to the next question, and then I'll address, I know, one that is burning for everyone. So is my change request guaranteed? And the answer unfortunately is no. We will do everything we can at this time to accommodate that request, but we can't guarantee it. If we can't accommodate your request, your child will be placed on a waiting list for availability based on cohort size, classroom space. And remember that we're at this time still following the CDC guidelines for social distancing. We have to consider transportation and the guidelines there for the number of students that we can have on the bus. So there are a lot of factors that come into play when we're planning for allowing students, additional students, to return to the classroom in second semester. And so the burning question, I think, is why are we asking for decisions so soon before the start of this semester on January the 19th? And the answer to that is that, as I mentioned before, there are so many aspects to the planning process, including transportation and how many students and how many seats we have available on the bus. We have to consider meal service and the impact there. Again, we have to consider social distancing requirements and the space that we have available in our classrooms. And we also need to look at cohort size. So in order to best prepare our students and provide timely feedback for our families, we have to gather this information now. I know that we had a lot of frustrated parents, and rightly so, when we were bringing students back in over the last four weeks, that the communication coming from us about the cohort they were in or the bus route that they had and transportation information was not timely. And so in order for us to plan ahead and give that information back to our families so that they can make plans, we need to have that information now. So I want to thank the families that have completed the survey to date and encourage those that have not completed the survey to do so if they are considering having their child transition from remote-only to hybrid or in-person learning during the second semester. I'd like to also give some updates now about some recent changes, as Dr. Edwards said, about student attendance. So I want to remind our families and our community that student attendance, school attendance, is vital. And as our student representatives, Jaden, said, whether it's in-person or remote-only, attendance is vital. Students attending consistently is key for their learning and their success, but it's also helping them grow and develop socially and emotionally. So I want to say to parents and guardians and families that you are essential in promoting good school attendance even during this most challenging time. And we acknowledge, as Dr. Edwards said, that we have made some changes to attendance procedures since the start of school. And when we make these changes, it's, when we make a process or a procedure, it's really based on our current reality. And unfortunately, during a pandemic, sometimes that reality changes, sometimes even on a daily basis. And we try something and we realize that it's not the best practice. A few weeks ago, Dr. Edwards and I met with the secondary principals regarding some changes related to attendance. And I just want to say and thank them for the good solutions that they brought to the table. So I have asked them to be here tonight, and I think they're waiting at the door. We have our secondary principals here tonight to share some information about the attendance practices that are currently in place at the middle school level. So right now, Matthew Mason, who was principal at Sandusky Middle School. at Sandusky Middle School, is going to talk about middle school attendance procedures. And then Tim Beatty, who is principal at Heritage High School, will go over how the attendance is handled at the high school level.
Mr. Mason, before you start, can, and I know, I know everybody over there, but can you just introduce everybody? Because not everybody is going to speak, just so that the people who are watching, who may not have a student at Dunbar Middle School, know who Mr. Rule is and so on.
I'll go ahead. Go ahead. You introduce your colleagues.
You can introduce everybody.
Go ahead. You introduce your colleagues, Matt.
Well, I'm Matthew Mason. I'm the proud principal of Sandusky Middle School, the best middle school in Lynchburg City Schools. They may not want to hear that, but I can only tell the truth when I stand before a mic. We have Danny Rule, absolutely amazing principal at Dunbar Middle School, somebody I look up to a lot. Same with Kathy Dills, principal Lincoln Middle School. Go Jags, go Poets. And then we also have this man right here, who ever since I've come here, I've gone to for wisdom. This is Mr. Tim Beatty, principal of Heritage High School, and the absolutely amazing, beyond description principal of EC Glass, that is Rose Floor. I think I did a decent job.
Nice job.
So I think I'm supposed to be talking about attendance. And so, mine will not be that long. The middle schools are pretty consistent with what we're doing with attendance. At 8:45, students come into the building, or they don't come into the building at 8:45, but 8:45, we have a Zoom, and it's a required Zoom that students are supposed to be a part of. If they are remote, obviously, the students who are in the building, they're going to be counted as present because they're there. Now, we know, leading with care, that we're not going to, you know, all students not going to be able to get on at that particular 8:45 time. So what we've also done is, as the SEL or Social Emotional Learning Question of the Day, that students are able to do as well to answer, a teacher can look at that and also say, "Okay, that student wasn't able to get on the Zoom, but they were here because they were able to do the question." Then also throughout the day, if students are attending Zooms with their teachers, if they are completing assignments during the day as well, if they are communicating back and forth, let's say with the school counselor or the administrator, their teachers, we are also counting them as present as well. So again, it just gives other opportunities for kids who are not able to get on an 8:45 to be able to say, "Hey, I am here. I am present." Because again, 8:45 works for some, doesn't necessarily work for everybody. So we're trying to do our best to make sure we give everybody opportunity. Again, as Dr. Edwards always says, we're leading with care with our community to make sure that everyone is at school because we see the value in that, obviously. So.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Mr. Beatty?
Good evening, everyone. First, I just wanted to thank our, the principals, assistant principals at both high schools, counselors at both high schools, and teachers at both high schools for working very, very hard through this entire process and with the process of trying to develop a good attendance policy, a good attendance strategy to try to capture attendance in this model of instruction, this new frontier of instruction that we're doing at this time. Our plan is very similar to the middle school plan. Our homeroom teachers push out a SEL question, Social Emotional Learning question, Monday through Friday. And students, regardless of what model they're in, whether they're hybrid or remote, are required to respond to the question by 3:00 PM, Monday through Friday. If a student doesn't respond to the daily question next morning, they're marked absent for the day. Then the attendance staff, our attendance clerk and our attendance coordinator work together to send out the absentee list to teachers and have them check for meaningful engagement, whether it's their physical presence in the building, their participation in the Zoom meeting, or Zoom session, excuse me, work submission or conversation via phone or email. So we're trying to be flexible to give students multiple opportunities to try to capture attendance because, again, this is a very trying time for our students and families. The attendance staff will also update the attendance as necessary as they get feedback from teachers. An automated phone call does go out the next day at 3:00 PM to let families know that the student's been marked absent for the prior day. So, you know, if you're a parent and you get a phone call, that lets you know that, mm, my child, maybe he or she didn't do the work. And that gives you the information to touch base with your child to make sure that he or she does complete whatever assignments that need to be completed for the day. So again, it's a collaborative process between both high schools. Again, the counselors, the teachers and admin teams from both schools did a great job, working hard to try to capture attendance in this very difficult and trying time that we're in right now.
Can we ask a question?
Absolutely. Go ahead, Bill.
I was just going to ask a question of the attendance from high school.
Can you ask questions when?
But are they going to be here?
They're going to be. They are not going.
They're not going anywhere.
They are not going anywhere. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Beatty. Thank you, Mr. Mason. And as I stated earlier, students in grades 7 through 12 have transitioned to hybrid learning. And for some, today was day three of in-person learning. And again, we've worked with our principals, with our teachers, with our counselors, with our instructional leaders to have conversations about what that, what our expectations are for in-person learning and what that looks like. So again, I have some secondary principals here. They're all here tonight. And I'd like to ask Mr. Danny Rule, who is from Dunbar Middle School, and then Dr. Kathy Dills, to share their expectations as a building leader for what they want to see and expecting of their teachers for in-person learning. And then we'll have an update from Dr. Jordan and Ethel, and then we'll all be here to answer questions.
All right. Good evening, school board.
Good evening.
Just a real quick, I want to give you the student perspective as they come back into the building. So our students in day, in 7 through 12, some as referred to are in day three. So as a student, I'm coming to the classroom, and I may be a student that's done all my work, and I'm on point where I should be in the online environment. And now, I'm in front of my teacher. And the teacher knows that because I've been communicating and getting feedback from the teacher. So the period will start off with this student who sits down. Then there's another student that might come in that hasn't done very much at all or really struggled with the online content, whether it be for the first quarter or whether it be for the last three days since I last saw my teacher. So we have two very different students coming in, or maybe even three or four, depending on where they are. And so, these students are then going to be working with their teacher in our teacher's job at that first. And we're in this transition phase of assessing and making sure we know where some are and the students also that we may not have had great collaboration with over that amount of time, where we're learning where those students are. So every student might be on a different level. But to start off, I know it's at different times based on the middle school, but there is an opportunity to where I get to have access to collab with the students that are remote that day, whether 100% remote or hybrid remote at that time. And so, they'll also be in my classroom and have some collaboration with me. And then the teacher's going to engage in the lesson that may be online and the curriculum that may be online for their class. They're also going to have an extension of that activity. So I've been privileged to see some successful egg drops at Dunbar and some not-so-successful egg drops from the roof at Dunbar. There's been, I've stumbled upon some rock studies in another science class, or a monologue in theater, or in art class where they're creating nursing home cards for the winter time to take out to the nursing home. So there's many different projects and hands-on engagement. There's also a time, because we're at so many different spaces as a student, to where I'm going to have some independent one-on-one time with my teacher. And that may look one-on-one if I'm here. School board member Harvey is right there, and he's at his computer, and I'm giving collab questions one-on-one. And it might be small group. I've seen some of the teachers collab with the library librarian, whether that's Spanish or history, and they've had collab small groups sessions down in the library as well. So depending on where each class is and what the lesson is that day, there's that time for independent work that I get some one-on-one time about what maybe Danny hasn't done or Danny did do and needed feedback on. And then there's the wrap-up, of course. And now, at the middle school level, we're roughly around 71 minutes for a period. But we want to give some time for those, the independent, because that child's going to be with, excuse me, without that teacher in front of them more than with the teacher in front of them in this, in this model. So we want to also provide the opportunity to have that Q and A time in person. I'm going to steal the words from one of my students today, and they said, you know, after an assignment was done and they had created this, a PowerPoint or to show the mastery of a certain standard, and they said, "You know, if you have a question, just ask Ms. Kelly because she knows everything, and she's going to help you a lot quicker." So it's that immediate feedback that they're thriving off of. So I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Dills, who's going to share some as well.
So from a student perspective, if I'm remote, I have decided that I'm going to stay home and I'm going to access my education through a remote platform. It was interesting because I happened to be walking the hallways today, and I heard this voice. And I'm thinking, where's that voice coming? And I stepped in the classroom, and there was a remote child who had hopped on a Zoom that they had access. So if I'm a student, I can hop on a Zoom during first, second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth period. I could stay on there for five minutes. I can raise my hand. I can get a question answered. But I may decide I want to stay in that classroom the whole time from a virtual model. And I heard a little voice, and they're like, "Wait a minute. Can you hear me? Can you see me? I've got a question." And so, they have this engagement. But I also have some families, you know, that don't have that access. So we've actually reached out to those families, and they've said to us, "Hey, can you send home hard copies? Because we don't have internet." Or, "Can you send home something? Because they don't understand this concept." And so, we actually have those teachers that will call in to those families, or they'll Zoom, they'll schedule an appointment on their duty period or their planning period, or after school or before school. And so, they still can reach those children. And there's still, still some families that we haven't heard from and that we're struggling to try to get in touch with. We've done some safe home visits. We've had some kids who have come to the front door and said, "My Aunt Suzie's at a doctor's appointment. I'm a remote kid, but can I have that little sheet of paper you told me that we could have that talks about the PowerPoint that you were doing? Okay?" So there's a lot of that we're trying to do with the equity kind of piece as well, because not only do we want to give them the opportunity to learn, but we still want that connection. And I'll speak for all of my colleagues. That's my favorite expression about heartbeats in the hallway, and I stole that from Mr. Rule. But the reality of it is, the energy came back because they're our kids, no matter what. So if a family calls us and says, "Hey, I can't do this, but can you help me do that?" Whether they're remote or hybrid, we're willing to try anything. We want to reach those families on, because it is a pandemic. And some of those kids were like, "Please come back to us." They're like, "Not during a pandemic." So we know that we still have to reach out to them. So not only are we giving them the opportunity to come into our homerooms into every single period, our teachers, our counselors, administration is reaching out to them by phone. We also have our school's social worker who is working out. We've reached out to Ms. Reeves, where she, Ethel Reeves, wherever she is. We've reached out to her and said, "Hey, we don't know what we can do here." And so, that's the other option that we're doing as a remote. Mr. Beatty?
I think we're good. Thank you, Dr. Dills, and thank you, Mr. Rule. So if you all want to ask questions of the principals before they leave, and then I'll have Dr. Jordan and Ms. Reeves come in. So go ahead. If you have questions.
Go ahead, Bill.
I do. I had a first question about the attendance at Glass. Like, if on a Monday, if I know my student forgot, did not go to the Zoom because they didn't get up till 11:00 or whatever day, if I do not have a phone call the next day on Tuesday, as a parent, that's telling me he did enough work or joined later in the day or submitted enough to show y'all that he was there.
That's correct.
Okay. So unless I hear from you, I am considered he's being present every day.
Engaged.
Okay.
Yeah. And the automated telephone call will begin this Friday. And let me step back in time so that, because I want everybody to hear this. We have been working with our vendor, which is School Messenger for our automated call system, and they've had to set up the attendance calls for us. And they've had to work with us in our attendance procedures and our methods. And so, the automated attendance calls will begin this Friday. So parents this week, we're leading with care. But beginning Friday, you will receive, if you receive a call on Friday, it is because your student was marked as absent on Thursday.
On the day before.
On the day before. Okay?
Okay. And then I add one other question.
Right ahead.
More about the teaching in person, because the feedback questions I'm getting from parents are very scattered about in-person learning. And I have a child that, with seven periods, his experience is very scattered per teacher, very different of what it looks like in person. And some parents have sent me emails and called concerned that in-person is simply an extension of that Chromebook and what you could be doing at home. And is it worth coming in and taking the chance in a pandemic? It's worrisome for some parents, but they feel like their kids really need it. But are they actually getting that instruction? Or is it simply an extension of what they're doing online? And I greatly, greatly worry about that.
Absolutely. And I appreciate your bringing that. We have had conversations about that, and we also have those same concerns. And so, our building principals are out in our classrooms. They're looking at instruction. But we also have to remember, as we've said, as our, as Jaden said, for some students tomorrow, this will be day two. Today was day three. And we have to think, and I know we are in a pandemic, and we have to, we're making changes and navigating in the pandemic. We also have to think about what a regular school day or a regular school week would have looked like for the first week of in-person learning pre-COVID. And so, I would ask that if your children are coming home and expressing these concerns, that you reach out to the classroom teacher as a parent and have a conversation with them. Ask them, because it may not be that they're spending the entire time. But yes, the teacher might have instructed, have done some small group lessons, they might have done a lab, and now they've asked for 15 or 20 minutes to go on and access some resources on Google Classroom. So I would ask that if your children are coming home and reporting that, that you first reach out to the classroom teacher. And then if it continues, that you reach out to the building principal and address it there.
So I just want the community to understand, the intention is teaching.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely. That is the.
They are not being there on a Chromebook. I just want to put that out.
That is, that is the intention. And we are monitoring that from a division level. And I know that the principals, the instructional leaders, the building leaders that we trust in to lead our buildings are monitoring that at the school level as well.
Dr. Fada?
One question I had to follow up with what Mrs. Evans asked, or similar to that. How are students excused? And is there a certain time that they have to call in or do something for that excuse to take place so they won't be counted? What's the excuse? How are students excused?
I think if they reach out to the school and if they're not able to get on, if they're not able to get on to their device because of internet issues or power outages, they contact the school, contact the teacher, explain why, then, you know, that can be excused. If they have to go to the doctor if they're out because of sickness, all they have to do is call the school and let us know. And we try to work with each student individually in regards to that. And often, and again, you know, once the phone messaging system goes out, that will alert parents to know that if a child did not do his or her work, that will let them know that they need to make sure that they get the work completed.
And just, and also, I just want to say that we have, we often get, receive messages or emails regarding concerns. And one was about it at the 8:45 AM. If you're not, if you're in the remote learning, that's a little early to wake up if you can have time to do your work. But I was glad to hear, and that's why I'm so happy for these presentations, is that there are so many different ways that you can show that you're participating. And that's something I think will be just very, it's important to express or to explain that you can, as you said, answer the SEA.
SEL.
L question. If you're talking on Zoom with the teacher or even with the counselor, it shows that you're engaged at some point in time. That was great. The other thing is the interventions being made. I know Dr. Brennan mentioned last, at the workshop, about all the ways we're trying to reach the students who need help or need the paper or need whatever they need. We're really trying to put those interventions into play, and we're really looking at the equity. The other thing is, with the transportation, what, I know I have heard concerns regarding some students going to the wrong schools or getting dropped off or needing to be picked up or, so what are we doing to address that regarding the transportation? I know it's a pretty complicated schedule right now, but how are we doing with that?
It is a complicated schedule. And again, I don't want to keep going back to this, but I also think we have to consider that even in our pre-COVID year, we would have transportation issues. Working, still working with and the Transportation Department on helping them to look at those issues and how we can resolve those. I would have to say that the issues that we started out with four weeks ago or five weeks ago with our elementary pre-K through 2 students have pretty much, you know, gotten, been under control. So I think we also need to be patient and give it some time to work out with those students that are just transitioning. Again, if you have a child that's not picked up or a bus that doesn't come, I mean, you know, the bus that doesn't come and your child's not picked up or there is some issue, please, I would ask that you reach out to your school to let them know. Reach out to the Transportation Department. We've asked them to increase their call handling. So we hope that they are able to answer those calls. So we hope that they are able to, to answer those calls and address them. But work with your school if you're still having issues with transportation. We are, we are diligently working through those as, as much as possible. And keep in mind that our routes are different this year because it's based on a geographic location. And we've never done our transportation routes that way. So your cohort A students are in a geographic location. There are some across the city. It's not like we're picking up one side and then the other side on opposite cohorts. But there is some, because we're balancing our cohorts. There is some geographic traveling that has to happen across the city that is taking a little bit more time for us to work out.
And the last thing, I just want to say, I'm happy that there's this period of time to allow people that are doing or their parents or whomever needs to decide about the remote learning to come back to in-person learning. This amount of time to decide, because that was another concern. So that concern has been addressed too. Thank you for that.
I also wanted just to state when they're talking about attendance, that, you know, there are, there are lots of ways, as the principals have talked about, for teach, for students to show meaningful engagement. We also have said that learning from home, remote learning is not synchronous. And so it's, it's asynchronous. It's not time bound. And so we did that and we communicated that message so that our families had some flexibility, that the learning could be flexible and the families could work in that learning and support their students during that day. So if a student isn't able to complete Monday's SEL question or an assignment on Monday, but gets to it on Wednesday, we are going back and looking at that and leading with care. So if a parent were to call and say, yes, but my child submitted this, or the, the student reaches out to the teacher and says, yes, but I did Monday's work on Wednesday, we can go back in and change that absence to a presence. The other thing I want to let everyone know is that our attendance now is defaulting to present, which is making the process somewhat easier for those that are doing the, the details and the processing. So we're not having to go in and mark present. We're just having to go in and change those to absences.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. I do recognize several board members want to share. So let me do it this way. Dr. Gupta, Ms. Morrison, then Dr. Sinha, then Ms. Carter, I mean, uh, Ms. Evans would like to speak again in that order.
I just wanted to, uh, I, I don't know, I have to pull my mask forward. Thank all your teachers for doing an excellent job in this pandemic, especially Mr. Beatty, because I watch his school every day. When most of us are sleeping at 7:30, 6:30, I see cars pulling into his driveway. I call it your driveway. And the, you say the heartbeat is back into the corridors. I say heartbeat is back in the parking lots. And, uh, other thing I've noticed it, which is Heritage Elementary is not here. But it's good to see parents lined up all the way up to the driver's ed parking lot to pick up their kids. So they're, they're equally involved and enthusiastic about schools opening back. So thank you.
Absolutely. And Dr. Jordan, Director of CNI, she's going to come in in just a few minutes and give us some, some really good updates from elementary. So, other questions?
Right. In the order that I said, Ms. Morrison, then Dr. Sinha, then, uh.
Well, I have two, uh, two statements. And first of all, I want to thank you and your teachers. I had, um, three of my four grandchildren had teacher changes the day before they went to in-person learning. And those teachers, every single one of them reached out to the child or the student. One at Paul Monroe, one at Payne, and one at Glass to connect with the kid because they had remote learning. And they didn't want the, the student to walk into the classroom and not have a connection with the teacher. And that took a great deal of effort under hard symptoms times. And I'm so appreciative of that. The second one is, I also know that if a parent is having trouble with any of these methods, that there are other things I've heard from middle school principals and high school principals that they are willing to do to work with individual families. We have some families that may work, do schoolwork on Saturday and Sunday because that fits their schedule. And I've read the emails where you said, contact me, we will work with you and we will make that happen. So I'd like to thank you all for going the extra mile to make that happen for our families.
And I, I thank you and I would also just reiterate to our families, if you have a concern, please start with the classroom teacher and then work with the building principals or the administrators, because they are there and they want to help and they want to lead with care and be flexible and, and assist our students and our families. So please reach out to your schools.
Dr. Sinha?
Yeah, I'm, I'm really happy to hear, um, all these, um, accommodations you're making for families and students to demonstrate attendance. I have seen anecdotal evidence from parents saying, oh, I found out my child was marked absent 15 days or something. And that, that's just not true or things like that. And so there is some confusion about, you know, what counts as attendance. So it's good that there's starting to be some clarity there. Also the understanding that, you know, the, the fixed time may not work for a lot of families. And, um, and I, and I guess I am interested in what other kind of accommodations or remedies or solutions you have for parents who are disputing, say, past attendance or, um, other alternatives for students getting credit for doing the work and getting it done and being engaged. But maybe they aren't able, like you said, they can work on the weekends because that's when a parent is there. And during the week, they might be caring for younger siblings or something and really not be able to attend school. And that's just a, a, a challenge that the family faces. So.
It is. And I would have to say that, that our schools are working with those families. So if you are a family that is experiencing that and you haven't reached out to the school, please reach out to the school. And I know that they will in confidence work with you to do what they can to make sure that your child is, is, um, their attendance is marked correctly.
Ms. Evans?
That, that, Ms. Morrison said my whole point. I just want the community to hear that that is not the only attendance ways is Zoom meeting in the morning. We've made it perfectly clear that we will work with families for parents on your school.
Before we go back to Dr. Carter, Dr. Nellis or Mr. Harvey, that you all want to weigh in?
I just, you know, what other board members have been saying about the efforts that all the staff are taking on behalf of the students and families. And I think if there's one thing the takeaway is from the presentation tonight is, we're flexible. It's like if there's, if there, you have concerns, reach out to the teacher and the building principal. And it's clear y'all are going the extra mile to work with the families. And, and everybody needs to understand that. You know, we're, we're here to, we're here for the students and y'all are doing a great job and, um, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nellis. Mr. Harvey?
I, I would, I would agree with everything that everyone has, has been saying. I've just been so impressed with the administrators at each school level. It's, it's just amazing how fluid this situation is and yet how flexible you guys are. I always refer to it as rigid, rigid flexibility that you guys have clearly shown. And so the administrators of each school and the staff at each school have just really gone above and beyond. And I'm just really thankful that we have great quality people like this in LCS. I mean, this is, this is just impressive. I mean, if, 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 if the corporate world could be as rigidly flexible as you guys are, I mean, we could solve any problems. So, great job.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Dr. Carter?
Just as others have said, um, I really, this year I've just seen, I just think everyone has been amazing at just tackling this problem, just trying to do the best we can with the situations that we, that we have. And as the student rep said, this is new to all of us. And I think I've just seen so many amazing things done and accommodations and just willing to work with others and collaborate and to just help with every student by name and by need. I'm truly, I'm seeing that this year. And just the wonderful job that everyone is doing. And you can tell by the presentations, and this is just not us saying this. I've witnessed this. I've, I'm hearing this. But now I'm going to my question. You stated earlier that 57% of the students are hybrid and 43% are remote. Now, in that 43% of remote students, do we have any idea or is there any indication already how many are willing to switch to come back to the hybrid?
As I mentioned, the survey was released on Monday. And as of this afternoon, when I checked, there were close to, I think, 690 responses. Keep in mind that that's, we asked each, um, family to submit a response per child. So if you have two children at home that are remote only and you want both of them to come back, that would be two surveys. So that's 690 that have expressed some interest in coming back. We haven't looked at all of that yet. So again, that's a lot of information. That's a lot of responses. And I really appreciate the, the 600 and some responses that have come in in a three-day time period. And that will help us plan and be able to figure out how we can accommodate additional students beginning in the second semester.
But were there any people that expressed an interest before the survey came out or that may have been placed on the waiting list because they were slow to respond to?
There were some calls to some schools because they were slow to respond to the first, um, uh, attempt when we were getting students back in this, over the last four weeks. And so there have been some calls, uh, families have been, had reached out to schools. And I can confidently say that all of these administrators behind me and the year 11, 12 elementary principals did everything they possibly could to accommodate those requests. Again, when we're looking at bringing students back in, if they require transportation, we have to take a look at the space on the bus and the bus route. We have to take a look at the cohort size and is there space in the cohort? If there's space in, you know, is there class, space in the classroom? We have to look at staffing and the capacity of the teachers who may be teaching in-person or remote or a combo. So I can say with confidence that those that reached out because it was past the deadline, that the principals, the school leaders made every attempt to get those students in and were just not able to accommodate that request based on all of those factors coming together.
Ms. Morrison, did you have an addition?
I, I just have two quick questions. Could you please give me an example of an SEL question? I had to ask someone what that meant.
So, a lot of the questions that are asked are trying to adhere to the social, emotional learning of the students. And so some questions, some examples are that we've asked this week specifically. What can we fix about school to make next week a better or even better week for you? What is something you enjoyed learning last week? If you were to keep a journal, what would, what would follow the words, dear diary today? And so it's something to get students to think, thought-provoking, reflective.
Right.
Uh, type of questions so that students can give us feedback. And we take that feedback and we try to apply, um, apply to try to get better at what we're trying to do.
Thank you. My second question is, I hope we're doing the same thing for our staff. Because, um, the mental and emotional, this is a very stressful time. This is a very, um, and we're asking a lot of our staff. So I hope that we are finding some way to keep that communication open with them. And I'm sure that you are, but I just want to make sure that, um, our employees know that we are there also for them and concerned for them and their wellbeing.
Our teachers are working very, very hard. We're very thankful for their efforts. They work extremely hard. We have some teachers who are working through the weekend, at nine, 10 o'clock at night, trying to prepare lessons.
And they're doing both remote and hybrid, I mean.
Trying to contact, you know, parents and students who may not be doing their assignments. And so, uh, they're the real MVPs. They're working really, really hard. And we're very thankful for them and, and the work that they've done to try to meet the needs of our students.
And if I could.
Okay. You may be able to address that because that is something that we've been having conversations about is how we're also providing social, emotional supports for our staff, not just our teachers, but all of our staff. All our. Are there any other questions for?
Dr. Edwards would like to make a comment.
I was going to follow up on what you said. I think one of the reasons why these five principals are here, and none of them had the tour date of board meeting on their agenda prior to us sharing some of the information. But when, when Amy and I shared what's, and I'll say trolling out there on social media and some of the not-so-nice things that are being said about and spread about. These five principals, and we really just stuck to secondary, because as you can see, they're trying to practice social distancing. But they, they were right there, like, let us come with you. Let us dispel the rumors. Let us talk about what's going on in our schools, um, what we're seeing with our staff. They are so supportive and protective of the staff right now because the staff are, they're doing some amazing things. And you can imagine how it must feel when you're doing amazing, you're giving your best. And if you, if you get on some of these social sites, it just feels like you're not. So I commend you guys, all of you, for, you know, whatever you were going to do tonight, making this a priority, coming and sharing on behalf of the work that you're doing, um, the work that your staff has done. And just really, I, I think I've heard you guys say, we have to tell our story. And having you all as the leads in the buildings to tell the story sends a very powerful message to families that say, please reach out to the schools, talk to your teacher. So thank you.
I.
Mr. Harvey?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to follow up on that, on that comment. Because one of the things that, that really is, is, is popping to me right now is that our community, you know, educating our, our youngest citizens is a community effort. And our parents have to take on that responsibility as well, not just simply finding fault, but searching for solutions. And, and it's been obvious that our administration and our teachers are really going out of their way, being flexible to do that. And so I just encourage our parents, let's, let's ease up on the finding fault part and let's search for solutions in how we can make this work. Because obviously these folks are accessible and they're responsive. So let's utilize that opportunity, if we have an issue, to search for a solution and not just simply find fault and go onto social media. So.
Deputy Superintendent Pugh, I know we're going to go to the second part of this now, but I just want to echo what I've heard my colleague say, Mr. Harvey, uh, most recent. This, in my personal opinion, is an example of exceptional educational effort. To have the five of you, all of you geniuses in your own right, show up tonight and do this for us is incredible. And this board wants to partner with the community. And again, ask that every person, whether you be a parent or whatever your capacity may be, talk to those, uh, teachers in the classroom and the building principal. And that would help because you'd be surprised how you'll get the accurate information when you do that, rather than going and sharing information in ways in which it only creates further confusion when we're trying to bring clarity in the midst of COVID-19. Let's give them a hand in the question.
I want to thank the board for your support, for your questions. And I also echo, echo what Dr. Edwards said. You know, we just asked the secondary principals here tonight. I'm sure there will be an opportunity for some of our elementary principals to be here. But I greatly appreciate that these five instructional leaders, building leaders, and, and champions of education for our students took time away from their families tonight to be here. So thank you.
Thank you.
If we could, uh, if we have time, there are some updates from Dr. Jordan as well as.
No, we want to hear them. Bring them on in.
Ms. Reeves. All right. Thanks.
Thank you guys.
Thank you guys. Thank you so much. This is very important, board, that we have this in our community and hear this. Wonderful.
I'll wipe it down.
Thank you all for those protocols. Thank you.
All right.
Dr. Jordan, always a pleasure to have you and Director Reeves.
I just want to say how weird that is to see people that I sat beside every day last year and saw them in meetings. That's the second time I've seen those folks since March. And it is so strange not to get a Tim Beatty handshake if you've ever gotten one of those. So we appreciate your support. And as much as the kids are getting used to the new environment and the parents and the teachers, administrators are figuring out how to navigate this. And we miss each other, you know? We miss camaraderie. And I said to somebody the other day, what did we do before COVID? What did we do before we were problem solving every single moment of every single day? We went into a meeting, a Zoom meeting this morning and we popped on a few minutes later. Ms. Pugh and I get on there. Ms. Pugh and I get on there, some members of the CNI team. And the air was lighter in there today, a little bit lighter in one meeting last week. One of the principals, Sharon Anderson, had on the most hilarious wig last week. And she ended up having to tell us on Zoom, guys, this is a costume. And we all just burst out laughing. So the, the elementary schools are a few weeks farther into this process. And you can tell that the air's a little bit lighter. The, the comments today were, you know, our teachers are really figuring this out. They're doing an amazing job balancing everything we're throwing at them and things are changing by the moment. And Sharon said that the other day, she couldn't figure out what a teacher was doing at Heritage Elementary School, that she was walking her laptop and she was talking. She was taking the remote kids on a virtual field trip of the school. So they were going to do something that they would have done in the building. You know, things that you would never even expect. Our teachers are doing it. Ty Gafford was dressed as Charlie Brown the other day. We're having Spirit Week. We're, we're really spirited with face coverings. We are doing everything humanly possible to make this experience special for students. And secondary is figuring it out right now. So if you're hearing some negativity about instruction, it's the first day of school. It's the second or third day of school. We're doing some of the procedural things. If that continues, let us know. We're all figuring out what this looks like. And one of the secondary principals last week said, my teachers are scared. They're scared right now of how close do we get? This is the first time we've met students like this. So thank you for being flexible and thank you for cheerleading everybody on throughout this. And I hope really soon that we can get some handshakes and we can hear laughter again because this has been a really heavy time. But everyone is going above and beyond. And we appreciate the community's support, your support, and we appreciate you.
Thank you, Dr. Jordan. Director Reeves?
I appreciate you all allowing us to take a little time to do what we're supposed to do with regard to safety.
And thank you for, thank you for doing that for us this evening. Thank you so much.
Because even when our children return to the classroom, we have to pause and we have to clean and do. So this is a normal routine for us. I wanted to, as I was listening, everything I was going to say has already been said. When we talk about what we've been doing with families, when we talk about what we've been doing with our students and how we're trying to help them, collaboration and flexibility are those two words that rise to the top. I want to acknowledge that November 2020 is Family Engagement in Education Month. The Virginia Department of Education, along with the State Department of Education, resolve and recognize that family engagement is very important. There are three points that I want to read from the resolution. And one is partnerships between families, schools, and communities, working collaboratively throughout a child's educational journey results in students of all backgrounds and abilities achieving at higher levels, becoming productive citizens, and contributing to our communities and society as a whole. Two, family engagement is an ongoing process that increases active participation, two-way communication, and collaboration between families, schools, and communities with the goal of educating the whole child to ensure student achievement and success. And lastly, the partnerships between families, schools, and communities must be viewed as equal with shared responsibilities, and schools must take the lead in developing and sustaining these collaborative partnerships to ensure maximum effectiveness. I can say in working with my colleagues, and I don't just say principals, I work with Latonya Brown and Student Services, everyone understands, much like our student representative said, we are all on a learning curve. That includes parents as well. I so appreciate your statement, Mr. Harvey, because the community needs to understand that we have to do this together. We have, yes, I get calls from families. Yes, I've listened to parents who are, who are disgruntled, who are frustrated, who are even crying. And we have to take on this mindset of what can we do versus what we can't do? What are we able to do to meet the needs of our students and our families? And I am proud to say that in working with my colleagues, while it is sometimes challenging you all, it is very necessary to have the conversations to make sure that, yeah, we're being equitable, but we're also doing the things that we need to do. I should say, and we're doing the things that we need to do to meet the needs of our students and families. When I go into the buildings and as I listen and as I watch, I always make sure I ask this question. What is it that we need to communicate to our families? And you've heard tonight from our, from my colleagues, the importance of collaboration. There are things that are going out in our communications to families. And I guess there are a few simple things that we would ask our families to do. And that is, make sure your numbers are current. Make sure phone numbers and email addresses stay current. The second thing would be to, as many of you stated tonight, communicate with the teachers. Because we're all on a learning curve and because situations and circumstances are so incredibly different, we have to make sure that each one knows what the other one is going through. We recognize that people are very protective of their business. We get that. But if we don't know what's happening, if we don't know that there's no internet, if we don't know that during the week the child is with grandmother somewhere else and school time is really on the weekends or in the evenings, we think children are absent. So it's communication that we need. I would say to the community, please, and when I say community, I'm not just talking moms and dads and grandmas, anybody who has any type of influence over our young people. Please encourage them to reach out to teachers, reach out to our principals, share what it is that you need because we are all on a learning curve.
Thank you.
All right.
Any other, any other questions? Because we are not going to run away tonight.
You've done, you've done a great job. Dr. Senna?
Well, following up on what Ms. Reeves said, yeah, I want to encourage families. You know, we're, we're a culture of doers and achievers and skills. And it can be very hard to admit that you don't know something. And so there can be a real reluctance to ask a question that might reveal how little you know as a parent or a grandparent. I would hope that with this presentation, we've made it clear that, don't let that be a barrier. We will not shame you for what you don't know. In fact, you know, we will, we will congratulate you and hold your hand and walk you through because we want you. We know it's a hard time for everybody. Even people having the best of circumstances are struggling. We're tired of this pandemic. We're tired of having to stay in. We're tired of not being able to get our hair cut. I mean, we're, there are all kinds of things, the way it's handling us. So yes, please take advantage of the openness and willingness to talk to somebody at the school, get your questions answered, or work with them to find a workable solution so that you don't fall further behind or you don't just suffer in frustration over things that could probably be readily solved. So I just want to put that encouragement out there for, for our families.
Thank you, Dr. Senna. Ms. Morrison?
We, we heard tonight that there were a significant number of students that we have not located. Can you show, you all share with us the efforts that we have gone to as a school division to find students, either through our partners, partner agencies, school division, employees?
Absolutely. I know that at the school level, they have, you know, teachers have reached out. They've called all the phone numbers that are listed in Infinite Campus. And that's why it's so critical, as Ms. Reeves stated, that, you know, families, please make sure that your information is correct. And if you can't update it in Infinite Campus, please give the school a call and they can update it for you. So I know our schools have reached out, teachers have reached out, guidance, our, our school counselors have reached out, the, the social workers. And now we're, we, we are also reaching out from the division level. So we have staff from our Student Services Department who have been making phone calls and making safe home visits and those types of things. And so we are going to exhaust every possibility to make sure that we are connecting with all of our students.
I thought that was the case.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Gupta? Thank you, Ms. Morrison.
I would also share that each school created a family connect team. I don't know if you remember, when we started this, there was a division family connect team. Once we started coming back in, the buildings took ownership. That was not a mandate. They took ownership of their students and said, we want to be the ones that connect with our families. And so they are doing socially distant home visits as appropriate. I've known some people to show up at others' jobs with paperwork and assignments and what have you. So they are going the extra mile to make sure that we reach families. It, it sounds a little strange, but we're doing what we need to do to, to reach our families and go on the extra mile.
Dr. Gupta?
A few weeks ago, the attendance was about 84%. You know offhand, where does it stand now with the high school coming back?
I do not. And today would be day three of that. So I know that our numbers came out this afternoon at the end of the day, and I have not had time to take a look at that. So we can follow up on that.
All right. Thank, thank you very much. And I hope that each of our board members will encourage as many people as possible to view this iteration of our school board meeting because it, as I stated at the beginning, is a wealth of information and accurate insight into the intensity of the demonstration of empathy and excellence that is going forth at LCS at such a time as this. And so we want to thank you. This was a very valuable use of time to get a lot of things cleared for our public. And we want to thank you, each of you, for what you have done. All right?
Thank you for your support and for allowing us to take the time.
Thank you so much.
Can we take a break?
Before we take a break, and we can, we'll take a three-minute break and then come back, I do want to encourage our tech folk, all of you, just make sure that your mic is up as high as possible and, and trust whoever makes sure it's on, so that everybody in the viewing world can hear us appropriately. And so if you all didn't like three, five-minute break and we'll be back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Five is... Update regarding our cases and COVID information.
Well, thank you, as expected, for this time of year with cold weather and as is happening all over the country in the northern states. As activities move indoors, infections are going up. The table at the top shows change since our last meeting, and we've had almost 300 new cases. So we tend to run a new case rate that's higher than the state average. A few more hospitalizations occurred. We know the fixed capacity of Sentra, so that's always alarming. And and a rise in deaths, too, so that's always of concern. So it still remains a very serious situation out there. Community still needs to be mindful of their role in keeping everybody safe. And I I'd say, just looking at this, again, we're learning to live with COVID, but to me, like, there's no justification, for example, of going from a six-feet social distancing to three feet.
Right, yes.
As cases are rising, particularly because, as I've said before, City of Lynchburg has very different demographic makeup of students, populations at risk, multi-generational households. And even if you just look at the school-age population, they consistently comprise about fifteen to twenty percent of new cases. Those kids come to school, those kids go home. I mean, so it's there, and so we do need to be careful and sensitive to that, but we can just hope that nobody sends their children to school sick. And that when we do have an incident instance of illness, we can isolate and keep that from affecting more than just a classroom, for example. So that's basically my report.
Thank you. Dr. Senna, Ms. Morrison, comment?
I do think that we had an interesting comment earlier in public comments about people traveling and gathering over holidays and and time away from school and that would request that individuals keep that in mind if they're doing large group gatherings or family meals, that people do have to go back to work, and particularly our students. So I I thought that was an excellent point and one that we need to monitor.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison, Dr. Carter.
Well, that just makes me think of student interns from colleges. What do we have in place? Because I know sometimes that may be a concern or a problem or maybe traced back to...
Like student teachers?
Student teachers, yes.
The interns are following the same guidelines as our employees have been, and, you know, they've been great in in definitely doing that. But the the risk of family for the holiday season is a real one, and and that's another reason why, when I was mentioning subs, and it may not be just a positive COVID as much as it's a quarantine thing that we need to do if necessary. So we'll we'll keep an eye on it. The one thing I do want to say, and again, kudos to the staff for our ability to shift to remote if we have to for a period of time, and then shift back to in-person, you know, if we need to do that. So we're being real mindful of that. The other thing is, someone had asked a question about just going into cold and flu season, particularly with kids who suffer from chronic illnesses. If parents and healthcare providers can work together and say, this is the chronic illness of, and a child has a documented history, it'll allow us to get him or her back into school sooner than saying we have to stay out for the fourteen, ten to fourteen days, depending on it. But we're we're concerned about just staffing going into it. And I do want to compliment my staff. I you you know, you say that, and then you want you also want to say, but if you're sick, stay stay home. And you don't want staff to feel like, I need to be at work because I'm the only one who teaches this class, but if I'm sick, you know, I should probably stay home. And I want them to err on the stay-at-home part of it.
I think Dr. Carter has an additional statement, and Dr. Gupta.
I know some companies or agencies have a, like, an informal or some type of agreement with their employees that if they leave the state for any period of time, they're really encouraging them not to. And if they do, then they have to self-quarantine, and I think there's some other consequences or I don't know exactly how they do that, but is that something that we need to look at or...
We do not have that in place, monitoring staff for if they leave, you know, the state, the area. And we, when we first were thinking about it, obviously, it was something that we considered. And then, of course, monitoring it and keeping track of it is is personnel-intensive. The other thing is, okay, so if everybody leaves self-quarantine, who takes their place? And knowing that the the substitute challenge that we have is also very real. So we struggled with that one as to what the right, and I don't know if there is a right answer for doing that. And originally, it was, you can't go to places that are designated as hotspots, how hotspots were being defined. And then, where we living in a hotspot at the time, where, you know, it's Lynchburg, a hotspot as well. So but currently, we don't have anything that mandates that. We ask staff to use good judgment, staff and families to use good judgment, and we have had some folks who've said, I'm just being precautionary, just in case. And we're like, okay, we can, you can log in remotely and do that, so.
Dr. Gupta?
I appreciate your comment about chronic illnesses, like I have an asthma, but nowadays, when you cough, people think you got COVID.
Yes, yes.
So that's paranoia there. But I agree with you. I'll give you a small example of how the cases are rising. A big hospital in Philadelphia, where I have a loved one working, an ICU, a patient got COVID positive after a couple of days in ICU. Patient didn't came with COVID symptoms. So they had to quarantine the whole ICU staff, doctors, nurses, cleaning crew, everything. So that's not what you're saying. So how do you replace the whole ICU unit, which becomes very difficult? So this problem is real, especially in big cities like Philly I just mentioned. And once you're intubated, it's very difficult, as per my little doctor, to come out of that intubation. So take precautions, and this this another surge is showing up, at least in big cities. So as you said, the traveling people, I don't know how far they are going and where they are going, but replacement of staff will become an issue if there's ever a second surge.
So living with COVID is real, and the dynamics are real. Thank you, Dr. Gupta. Anyone else want to comment on the portion Dr. Senna stated? All right. Thank you all very much, and this has been a very constructive return-to-learn update. Thank each of you. We will now move on to our new business, our agenda, item I one, which is coming for action today, capital improvement plan. Dr. Edwards, if you will.
Absolutely. So this was presented at the finance committee, and Steve and Kim, and Steve is here, did a great job of working with the city, kind of project some things. I do want to point out on the document, I like above the box and below the box, but what's in the box, although it says not funded, that's the if-then area of this capital improvement plan. And there are some things down there that basically say, if we don't attend to this item, whatever this item is, whether it's the new building or a renovation of, you know, an HVAC system, we're going to be servicing it at some point later if we don't. So kudos to Steve for including that as a placeholder and really thinking through, these are real possibilities for for what may happen. I'm going to ask him, since he's here, to talk a little bit about the items on the list and explain to folks, too, as you helped us out, as to what's actually funded and what's projected.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
And first, I'd like to say thank you for your confidence in me and your support, and I'm looking forward to serving LCS in this new role and looking forward to the challenge. So thank you. So a capital improvement plan, our capital improvement plan is just one part, one segment of the city's capital improvement plan. So the capital improvement plan actually resides with the city, but because our buildings are owned by the city, our property is all owned by the city, we are included on their plan, just like parks and rec and water resources and public works and that. So, as I said, this is just one segment of their total plan. The plan is is a rolling five-year plan. So what we are looking at right now is the plan from '22 through '26, with only the first year, '22, being funded. So when this is presented to the city council, what they will be looking at funding, approving for the the funds for, will be only '22. The rest of it is our, is the the plan going forward, what we hope to have, what we anticipate our needs will be in the succeeding years. As we move on from '22, next year, we'd be looking at '23 through '27. So you're dropping one year, picking up another. Another thing that that I want to bring your attention to is is sometimes you'll hear people refer to, as far as our plan, the LCS plan, as above the line and below the line. And in general, the above the line is that top section there. On this one, it is only four lines, but it's the renovations, replacement projects. That is, are the larger projects that are normally financed by the city through whatever means they get their large funding financing from. Below the line would be the projects that are listed under capital maintenance projects, and those are also funded by the city, but in a large part, it's funded by fund balance return. So if you remember back a month or so ago, when we talked about the fund balance return for this last fiscal year, we had a whole list of items on there where that money would be used, that we requested from city council, and we told them where we'd like to use it. Well, on there, there was $700,000 for capital improvement plans, our capital improvement projects for next year, for 2022. We also had $200,000 on there for thing, well, COVID-19 supplies. And the city said, can we do something, not give you the money for the COVID-19 supplies? We can make sure that we can get CARES fund or whatever to cover that and use that $200,000 that we had in there for that for to fund a facility study. And we really liked that idea. So that was kind of the the how that happened. So we also, they also asked us to basically confine our spending in the CIP for next year to the $700,000. And that's what the 2022 reflects now, and I'll go through that here in a second. So now, the pro, the reason that you see $200,000 appearing in 2021 is we realized that if we put it in 2022, that money is not available till July 1st of next summer, so of 2021. And that's generally how it's done. It's approved in the spring, we get the funds in on July 1st, but generally, our projects aren't done, aren't even started until the following summer, because most of our projects, we'd like to have the buildings unoccupied. When you're doing a roof job or whatever, you you try not to have people in the building and whatever. So most, sometimes we will get a jump on on things. We got some HVAC projects, chiller replacements, that we're going to be hopefully doing right after the first of the year during the heating season. So but generally, we get the money one July 1st, and we're really not spending it until the following summer. But again, for the facility study, because we want to start on that as soon as possible, the city is is requesting that that get going. We needed it in a fiscal year that we had the had approval to use it. So the city requested that we put that $200,000 into 2021 so that it can be accessed right away. So other than that, the rest of it on this list, you're looking at for next year's funding. And as I said, the city asks us to restrict our spending to $700,000. So roughly, so that's why there's just a few projects on there. We have a chiller replacement at Bass that I put in, or we put in for $350,000. We think that's adequate. We have a chiller replacement at TC Miller at only $240,000. I do not think that's adequate, and I'll come back to that in a minute. We want to do a track renovation at Dunbar Middle School. The track is badly in need, being resurfaced, for $120,000. And then I, we have in here, just under the schools replacement program, roof replacement, $100,000. That, if you add all that up, we're now at $800,000, and we're $100,000 over what the city has requested. We have several pools, buckets of money built into the CIP for contingencies, for unforeseen situations where we, a chiller breaks down and and it just needs to be replaced, it's beyond its useful life, or we get a roof failure. You know, there there could be a number of things. And so we, money is, funds are built into the CIP to try to cover some of those contingencies, urgent matters that might come up. We have money in the current CIP, 2021, to cover anything on the mechanical side. We do not have, we didn't have anything for roofing. So I have, we have put in $100,000 there that is extra, that is additional money that we would be asking the city for. I'd like to back up a second and let you know that the current 2021 has a lot of projects in it that we will be doing, starting actually now through the summer. And there are, in those contingency fund lines, there is money for mechanical and basically any other building type emergency or whatever that might come up. The money in CIP, once it's appropriated, stays. So it's not like, and the money in operating funds and the money in CIP can never be mixed. It's never, I can't, we can't take money from operating and use it for CIP project, just as like we cannot take money from CIP to use it for operating. So once the money's in CIP, it's there. So like, last year, the city funded contingency funds for mechanical and other building needs, but we have used the contingency funds that we had in for roofing. So that's why I'm, why we're asking for that extra $100,000 there. I'd like to, if I could, I'd like to draw an imaginary line between 2022 and 2023, because that's where the facility study hopefully will fall. This time next year, hopefully, we'll have the facility study completed, and we will have some sort of a roadmap for the succeeding years. And so for 2023 on, that part of this plan could change tremendously. The one thing we hope will not change, and the city has assured us that they are working to the same goal, is that 2025, we will see the start, hopefully, of a new Sandusky Elementary. In our discussions with the city, they agreed, we agreed, that that was a good target date to hold, to hold to, that everybody would work to try to get Sandusky Elementary under construction in 2025. So again, you'll see, if you look at previous CIPs, you'll see, well, that's still kind of light in '23, '24. Well, when we built Sandusky Middle School, the years leading up to that, we helped contribute to the startup costs, the design and startup costs. to the startup costs, the design and startup costs, by holding back on some of our CIP and devoting that money to the startup costs for Sandusky Middle. And I think that would be a good way to go for, for Sandusky Elementary. Originally, in the CIP, back four years ago, when Sandusky Elementary was first on there, the city had 1.5 million in the previous year, for whatever year that Sandusky was supposed to be, I think it was like three years ago. But the year before, there was 1.5 million in there for startup costs, for design and site work and things like that. The city has removed that money, so that no longer appears on this. And so it's going to have to be replaced somehow or another, because you got to have a design before you can build a building. So hopefully, that will get filled in, but we might have to help them fill that block in the year before, in 2024, with fund balance money. So in, just to, if anybody saw earlier drafts of the CIP from last year, the year before, there are two projects, well, actually, all four of the top projects have been changed The new transportation building in 2023, and then, and that startup cost in, of 200,000, and then the six and, 6.5 million for the building. That was originally, 6.5 was in the CIP up until this version, at 2.5. And you'll say, oh, that's a pretty big jump. Yes, it is. That 2.5 was based on two things. One, it was based on pricing from 2013 or 14. It was also based on, at the time, the Virginia Department of Vehicles had, or DMV, excuse me, had approached us about using the back part of the facilities and transportation lot, our property back there. They were going to come in, they were going to grade it and everything and pave it, and use it for a testing of tractor trailer drivers. They didn't have a suitable facility to do that. So they approached us, they said, we'd like to do this, if you'll let us do it, you'll get a new, or you'll get a paved lot, which would have given us a nice sight for a new transportation building. So originally, those costs were not included in the 2.5. So we added those back in, and then we brought the construction costs up to date to what construction costs are today, and then we added 3% per year to inflation rate to that. So that's how we got to the 6.5. Under the Sandusky Elementary, if you saw that, that was in for 26 million, I believe, prior to this revision of the CIP. And that has grown to 37 million, and the reason for that is basically the, the price that we based it on back seven, eight years ago is no longer valid. Construction costs have gone up. We based the, it's based, that estimate is based on the same square footage, the same number of students that were, was in that original 26 million. But this reflects today's costs plus three years of inflation at 3% of the year. So that's how we get to the 37. The other, Linkhorn Elementary renovation, we think that that is still possible, and that really didn't change at 12.5. And then, and underneath it, you see Paul Monroe at 540. That is startup costs only. Remember, I said that it's a rolling plan. So next year, you would see the construction costs for Paul Monroe. The 540,000 is just the start, design, let's call them design costs. Okay? So you will see in 2027, next year, a figure similar to the 12.5 for, that's in there for Linkhorn in 2026. Going further down the page, then, I told you I wanted to come back to the underfunded TC Miller chiller. I think that's going to be closer to 350. It is a smaller building, it is a smaller chiller, the equipment is a little bit cheaper, but not much. However, as I said, we tried to stick within the city's request of 700,000. That's what we had available. But historically, the city has let us take money left over in projects that have been completed. And taken that money and transferred into other active projects. They've even allowed us at times to create a project, usually within the same type category, meaning if it's a roof project, they'll let us add another roof project, or though, if it's an HVAC project, we can do another HVAC project. But generally, we move it from one project that's been established and approved to another project that's been established and approved. And like I said, the city in the past has always allowed us to do that. And so we're anticipating with the projects that we have this year, we got good pricing, and we anticipate having some money left in the budget that we would then move to the TC Miller chiller. And then you get down to the very bottom, and that is, as Dr. Edwards said, is basically our deferred maintenance list. If it's a, if this doesn't happen, then we're going to have to, you know, so if we don't get a new Sandusky, if we don't do the renovations at Linkhorn Elementary and Paul Monroe, these are the costs that we're, we are looking at just to take care of the buildings. As far as the elementary gym, four and five, that's awaiting on the, the facility study to hopefully point us in the direction of where those are needed. So that, I think, is it in a nutshell.
Thank you, Mr. Gaskin, for your excellent report at the finance committee meeting and for the detailed nature in which you shared to us tonight. It's very helpful for each board member. As stated earlier, this is coming to us tonight for action, and it is a part of our fiscal responsibility, it's the five-year capital improvement plan, and of course, we want to determine whether or not we want to approve that tonight. The chair will entertain discussion from the board. Dr. Gupta?
So let me give a context of why the city wants facility studies, in my mind. We had a task force going for future of education in Lynchburg, and the task force has all the stakeholders, and because of COVID, they had to discontinue the task force.
That's correct.
And I think that's what making this, the facility study money to come in. My concern is that why are we putting buggy in front of the horse? Because when the facility study is going to be done, then the CIP project should be a result of that.
Right.
It's meant, looks like we predetermined where the school consolidations will be without, I don't know as a board member, what your plans are for school consolidation, but looking at between the numbers, I can see where we heading. But then, why to go through this facility study when we have made up the mind, where are we going to spend? Because it's not chum change, like 67 million dollars we are committing. So why don't we wait for the facility study to come back? Maybe we can push them to expedite, put a deadline on that facility study. And when that study report comes back, at that time, we can look at what are their recommendations? What do they want us to renovate? What do they want us to build new? That will be the appropriate time, in my mind, to talk about CIP projects for future, then now, in light of this facility study, which is forthcoming this year.
Yes, and, and you're exactly right. That's why, I mean, like I said, if, if I could, I would have put a, a big red line down between column 2022, BFS, before facility study, and 2023 and beyond, AFS, after facility study. Because from 23 on, and, and hopefully, the facility study will give us a roadmap, not just for the next four or five years, but it would be nice to go 10, 15, 20 years into the future. I think that's what the city is, is hoping for, because the city is facing some big priority projects of their own, you know, other than the Sandusky Elementary. So they, they are very interested in finding out what's ahead of them as far as the, the capital projects that need to be done in the city. So I, I fully envision that from, that this year, 2022, would be the only year that kind of stays the same. These chillers that we, we have to replace, and we're not, you know, just to run the building for the next four or five years, we have to do this work. From 23 on, that could change drastically based on the facility study, and I hope it does.
See, but my issue is, by saying we're going to rebuild or renovate Sandusky Elementary School, and the facility study based on the demographics of the current demographics of the city comes back and say, we're going to build a school in Bedford County or somewhere far away from Sandusky. So what we have done through this plan is raised and hope that Sandusky if, will be rebuilt, and Sandusky is not going to be rebuilt as per the facility study report. I'm using a hypothetical example. So by laying out this plan, what we are doing is raising people's home, a hope, like my Heritage Elementary gym, I thought maybe we'll build a new school now. So in my mind, I'm thinking, are there consolidation of schools? Because that, that gym is not included in this plan, it's part of the effort maintenance. You see what I'm saying? So people like me who are watching from outside in will be wondering, what is behind all these planning? Is there a school consolidation? So in lack of that task force being present, it's just, it raises eyebrows that we are committing or planning to commit about 60 million plus, and we have not done the plan yet. The plan is forthcoming.
Understood.
I would like Dr. Edwards to respond to Dr. Gupta's question.
Yeah, and, and more for just people who are watching for the very first time, who may be thinking that this, the, and I know it says Sandusky Elementary School, and other times, we called it Elementary School Replacement, that this CIP plan is not the first time that these items are in a projected list. So, and this, not, not for you, I know you understand that, Dr. Gupta, but I'm concerned that people watching might be thinking, oh, yeah, they just decided this year that they're going to renovate Sandusky in 2025, when in actuality, many of these items, if we were to pull out older CIP plans, you'll see where we should probably have already been on the groundbreaking of what was Sandusky based on previous CIP projections. And I will emphasize projections and long-range planning and our due diligence to do sort of an if then. And I do want to make sure the community understands that this by no means conveys any kind of predetermined consolidation plan that's in the works. And our work with the city in terms of doing the facilities, we need to look at all the facilities, because the one thing that, in talking with Steve, a lot of these decisions that have been slid out, 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 were made five years ago, and, you know, what we thought for the buildings at that time, once the facility study comes back, it may change, and we may say, ooh, this building that we didn't know is in a different shape. So we are absolutely, the same way you saw the team come in tonight, and their word was flexible, we are absolutely flexible with, and we want the facility study to help with the guidance, which is why we're, we're really excited to put it in the current year. But that also being said, two things happened to us. We, we either plan, and then we get people's hopes up, or we fail to plan, and then we're saying, we're, we're trying to explain why we didn't plan for something. So this plan that you see here is sort of an extension of, at least what I've seen the last five years of an existing plan, that pretty much is, well, when was the last time the roof on pain, or when was the last time the HVAC, and who's next in queue, more than a plan for, these are the schools we're going to consolidate? I really don't want anybody watching thinking that this is a plan that dictates what schools we're consolidating.
Dr. Gupta?
Can I follow? So I understand it was there, but the facility study was not there at that time. That 200,000 is brand new. And my concern is, are we using facility studies report to just rubber stamp this proposal? Or we are asking them to have an open mind about what needs to be done in LCS? And if there's an open mind, then that's where the planning will start.
Okay.
Planning will start with them, and they guide us what needs to be renovated, what needs to be fixed. This is, this, in my mind, means, forgive me for your hard work, this becomes obsolete at that point in time, because that's what they are. They are the consultants coming, looking outside in.
So again, just more for our listening public so that they have a clear understanding. The facility study was a joint discussion with me and Kim and Steve and Donna and Reed, and who am I missing? That was also, Kent, right? That was also there. So it's both sides of it. This is not just a, our plan, because the task force is now not active. And as a matter of fact, even when the task force was active and we did facilities walkthroughs, Steve was there doing a lot of the walkthroughs with the task force. So it is, it's a joint effort with exactly what you're saying, it, with an open mind. I mean, we're very fun conscious, the last thing we want to do is spend money somewhere that we shouldn't spend money, or miss something that we should have considered. So please, please, to the public again, please know that this is an awful lot of money that we're talking about. I mean, it's a big investment, and we want to do it right, we want to do it right with the city, and we want to work in partnership with them to do it correctly. And which is why, when they said, well, let's look at all of your elementary buildings, I think our side said, well, let's see if we could scoot in a few other older buildings, because we want to know what condition they're in and what we need to be planning for them as well, like a Dunbar and a Linkhorn Middle School, you know, Sandusky and Heritage are pretty new, Heritage High School.
Very good. Point well taken. Thank you, Dr. Gupta, for that. Let's expand the discussion. Mr. Harvey?
Yeah, I, I just would like to try to see if I can help, try to clarify a couple pieces too, because this is what I understood Steve to say, is, you know, this line separates 2020, which is, is funded. After that, those are, I, I don't want to just say simply numbers on the page, but they're projections. So they're not necessarily saying this is exactly what we're going to spend. And I also want to make a clarification that a facility study, I use the term facilities analysis, we're simply looking at the buildings, correct? We're looking at the condition of the buildings. It's not necessarily a study to decide we're going to consolidate a school or anything like that. My understanding is, this is basically to put together, have a team go out, analyze every single building, and analyze the condition of every single building, and give us a report. And at that point, I'm, I'm fairly sure that the, the report will say pretty much what you projected here, which, Sandusky Elementary School, I went there, and I'm 52 years old, and that building looks exactly as I remember it. So it has not had much work in a long time. So if, if, if Steve could correct me if I'm wrong on that, but I think that's the, the study is just to look at the buildings and report their condition, not to make any plans. After that study is done, then we can use that, with, with the city, we can use that information to help decide where we go from here.
Mr. Gaskin, can you affirm the accuracy of Mr. Harvey's assertion?
I'm sorry?
Is he accurate in what he just said?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Gupta, Dr. Gupta?
So let me come back to my point. If I'm a consultant coming in and I see your plan up to 2020- If I'm a consultant coming in, and I see your plan up to 2025, and will I be able to work with a clean slate in terms of facility studies or facilities planning? That's number one. Number two is consolidation may not be upfront, but as I said, if you read between the lines, if you're building a $37 million Sandusky Elementary School, there's no money invested on Deerington, there's no money invested on Heritage. If my child goes to Heritage, what will be my conclusion? That big building is going to absorb everything. So what I'm saying is, it may not be a direct impact, it may be an indirect impact of what I see today.
I hear your point, but I think the facility study is just going to give us a report of the building's condition. It's not projecting anything at that point. We will then take that information and make a decision after that. I think that if, I hear what you're saying, you're concerned that someone would look and say, okay, they're budgeting $37 million in four years to build a new school, and it's a done deal. It's a decided decision. And what I'm hearing is that it's not. That this facility analysis will tell us the condition of all of our buildings, and then pass this red line that Steve said he'd like to have on the chart, that whole chart could change based on that information.
If I'm the consultant, and you are my paymaster, you're paying me the check.
Mm-hmm.
Do I have, do you think, the freedom to deny your lines? You know, means your judgments, the conclusions you have made?
I think, if I could, I think what you're asking is,
Yes.
Yeah. But I don't think, I don't think that the team that's doing the facilities analysis is going to be making any predetermined judgments. They're simply recording what they observe. That's all it is.
Mr. Harvey, thank you for your explanation. And what I think I would like to determine is what is the will of the board concerning this? The superintendent is recommending that we approve the five-year capital improvement plan. And I think it is important that each board member have their comments. Dr. Nellis?
I'm happy to approve the capital improvement plan.
Second.
Second.
Been moved by Dr. Nellis, seconded by Mr. Harvey, that we will approve the five-year capital improvement plan as presented tonight. Is there any further question or discussion? Ms. Evans?
Just say one thing. I don't think the facility people that are doing this are going to get this and say, our projection is Sandusky. I think they're going in and just doing the assessment of the building. They're not looking at what our projection for 2025 is.
This is a public.
That's not their job. We're looking at this. That's not their job.
That's right, Dr. Nellis?
So this capital improvement plan is like every other capital improvement plan that I've ever seen from this board. And I don't remember, I can't remember Sandusky Elementary not being on there and scheduled for renovation or replacement. It just keeps sliding to the right because this is based on availability and priorities for city funds. The only thing that's planned is next year. Everything else is projected. And it's gonna get, and I hope it gets blown up by the facility study, because that's basically what the intent is, to say, here's where the buildings are. We have a lot of old buildings.
Yes, we do.
And so I have no issues approving this plan. Like I said, it's consistent with every other one we've done annually. I know the people at Sandusky Elementary are like, yep, here we go again. It gets pushed out another year, so.
Thank you, Dr. Nellis. Anyone else like to comment that hasn't, Dr. Carter?
Just want to say that when this was presented to us in the finance meeting, and like, as Dr. Nellis has stated, this is exactly the same. I just see, I've seen the Sandusky replacement just moved out a year further into the future. But I don't want anyone to go away thinking that there were a lot of backroom talk about closing down other schools or doing like that, because it wasn't part of that discussion. We're just really wanting to look at the facility studies and giving them the ability to say what they want to say regarding the facilities, and not saying you have to say it this way.
Right.
But just to do the study. And hopefully, whoever we get to do that will do it honestly. I wouldn't see why they wouldn't. And that's, and we can draw a lot of conclusions. You know, I've been, went to Payne and liked R.R. S. Payne, but this, nothing was discussed that I've heard of or been privy to regarding anything but just doing the facility studies. And as Mr. Gaski stated, just seeing that line of 2023 may change, things may change drastically.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. There's no further unreadiness on this matter. We will call for the vote. And I'm grateful for everyone's comments on both sides. I think we're showing our ability to talk a matter through. All votes in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries.
No, my vote is not yes.
Oh, I am so sorry, Dr. Gupta, and I do apologize for that. Let the record state that Dr. Gupta is an opposition.
Why my vote is no. I think the CIP plan should wait till the facility study or analysis, whatever it is, is done. At that time, we should make these projections.
So noted, Dr. Gupta, and thank you for that. All right, at this time, thank you, Mr. Gass, for the fine work that you have done in presenting this to us in a thorough way which you are moving forward. Item two now is the high school program of study, Dr. Edwards.
Okay, so the high school program of study is another item that annually comes to the board. Dr. Jordan is here. And what we've typically done is give you a short summary of what's different, what's changing, what's new, what's been modified. And I will turn it over to Dr. Jordan to quickly go over the summary of the high school program of study.
Hello?
Hello?
You're still here?
We're still here.
Program of studies for the high school is up for information tonight. Most of the changes from pages 15 down through 48 on this one pager are compliance-related. They are minimal, typically reflecting changes that are happening at the state level to course names, course codes. I did want to bring one topic up for your information, for discussion, if you would like to talk about this one. Changing some course weights to reflect the fact that a lot of our students are taking courses at early college, STEM, CVGS, any dual enrollment. We want to make sure that our students are competitive with other folks around us with the weighting of courses. And so that's really the biggest change in the program of studies, to make sure that any course that could be taken for college credit is going to be weighted as such. So as you look back over this before the vote next month, make sure you pay attention to that section.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Jordan. I do want to, within the context of the program of studies, I think it's page one, Dr. Brennan, who is not here, and of course, myself as well, and others, would just like to make sure that's updated now to reflect Dr. Sharon Carter from District 2.
Absolutely.
Excuse me? Okay. All right, I'm sorry. Dr. Nellis, and then Ms. Evans, and then Dr. Carter.
Do we know what the, I guess I'd like to see what the weighting is from the other surrounding school divisions?
We can share that with you.
Because this has been discussed in the past. And I know in the past, the rationale for the board was the 5L was reflected more of the rigor of the course. And certainly not all these courses are equally rigorous. And the other issue or aspect, I think, is the admissions people of the colleges are aware how we weight courses. So the fact that we're weighting some of these courses 4.5 versus a 5, I think has very little effect on how the students are ranked or evaluated or assessed or whatever the appropriate term is for admission.
Thank you. Ms. Evans?
I have some specific questions. Should I just email you before the next?
That would probably be better. Maria Jaeger and Lori Meadows spearheaded it within our department with counseling directors, secondary administrators. It was very much a team effort, and I'll be happy to take whatever questions. But if they're specific, we probably should take them back to the team. I do know that we may be facing amendments or addendums as we get farther into living with COVID. What does, what does this look like for 21, 22? I'm not as far out as Steve was with the compass about 2025, but we're over a year into the future, and we really don't know some of what could change at the state level. So we think we will have to amend this. We know that a change is coming to an African-American history elective at the state level. We're watching that one very closely. So we do know that we'll have to make some updates. And we want you all to give input. We know the weight has come up a few times, but we want to make sure that we are being thoughtful about the process and that we're looking at how Lynchburg City is differing from some of the other folks in our region. And not that we have to do exactly what they're doing, but some of our practices are different.
Okay, so that was part of my, my second part of that question is, they recently changed where, when you came in as a freshman, and it was a change between the two boys, it's been recent, where you have to take a class that has Part 1, Part 2. They didn't have it for my older son, but when Jimmy came in, so you've got to take drafting Part 1 or Part 2, or you've got to take criminology Part 1, whatever it is, Part 1, Part 2. And I couldn't figure out, is that a Lynchburg requirement? Or was that a Virginia requirement? Because it very much changes the outlook. Like some people would take AP art right there as an elective for the AP class, but we're, you're having to do these sequential classes. So we're having to take drafting, which is, of course, a 4.0 class that we probably never knew in years would have picked if he did not have to do a sequential class. So I didn't ever could figure out, is that a Lynchburg decision? Or was that a Virginia decision?
For sequential electives?
Yes.
That is a Virginia.
A Virginia one, okay. So all the counties around us are having to do that as well?
Yes. And it is, it is very tricky, especially in a remote environment, especially in an alternative school environment. So that's a very hot topic, and we're exploring some of our relationships with our current vendors for remote learning, to make sure that we have enough sequential electives available for every scenario.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Carter?
I just wanted to make a comment that I read somewhere in the studies that every student has to take, a secondary student had to take a virtual course. So, and I was just thinking, everyone should have that.
Yes.
Yes.
The guarantee curve.
Silver linings.
So much with learning, Dr. Gupta.
It's for you. I told Dr. Edwards the other day, you are a breath of fresh air. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
You are on top of everything, so. And I'm not saying it just to, I shared that with Dr. Edwards the other day.
Thank you.
So thank you.
I had surgery last week, and I really don't feel good tonight, so I appreciate that. I'll try to smile more next week when my mouth is not hurting. But we really want your feedback. And if you have concerns about any of the things that we bring to you for information, don't just rubber stamp it. If you have questions, if you find mistakes, please let us know.
Thank you, Dr. Jordan, and we appreciate what you just shared to us. And board members, please govern yourselves accordingly in this first reading in preparation for our next meeting. All right, thank you, thank you, Dr. Jordan.
Thank you, I'm going to go home now.
All right, we will now move to the last item under New Business, which is coming for action tonight. And I hope that we will approve this, acceptance of the coronavirus relief funds. Dr. Edwards?
Yes, these are the funds that just came out in October, and we want to make sure we don't miss anything. So somewhere in there was language about approval, or acceptance, or appropriation. So we just felt it was best to cover ourselves and put it on the agenda. We also put, copied what the bullet items state in terms of the usage and the timeline, because there have been questions about when do funds expire, how soon, how, you know, what we can use them for. So this is just a, more of a compliance so we can access the money.
Okay, Dr. Gupta?
As I said in the very beginning, my concern is leaving the achievement gap catch-up behind. I think there is some flexibility between item 1 and 5, and between 4 and 5, to be able to move funds around and move, you know, things so that you use these by December 2020, and the others are not going out till 2022. But they are all part of the same pot, like cares. So if I have that assurance
Yes, sir.
that you'll be looking into, you know, what we can do in terms of mentoring and in terms of reducing the achievement gap, which is very well documented by now.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta. If it's okay with everybody, maybe what would be a good idea for us to entertain the emotion around accepting the coronavirus relief funds, and then if there are any questions that we can do with it in that way? Is there a motion for approval or acceptance?
A move that we accept the coronavirus relief funds.
Move by Dr. Carter, there's a second by Ms. Morrison. Now, any discussion further? Thank you for your point, Dr. Gupta, well-stated. Anyone else? Then we'll call for the question. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed, and the motion carries. And I think that brings us, if I'm accurate, to the superintendent comments.
Absolutely. And just a few comments, one I wrote down in the notes. Anytime we get a gift or donation over $1,000, I just like to let the board know. And this is coming from Aruba, which is a network solutions company. And they have offered to provide us with two free outdoor AP bundles. And I wrote everything down there, because this is not my strong suit of language. But they're going to help us with outdoor Wi-Fi on our small sites and on larger sites to expand that. And they work with a group called Airheads Volunteer Corp. And this is an opt-in volunteer group of engineers who, free of charge, will help with the build-out of this infrastructure to help K-12 organizations. So we are very grateful for their commitment to help us and just letting you know about that. Quick thanks to Chief Zudima, Officer Ramirez, and Director Brown for joining me on October 22nd for a conversation in the community about SROs and our MOU, which will be the topic of our work session coming up. So we're looking forward to that. I also had an opportunity to accept some more funds from the Lynchburg Morning Rotary. And we had a nice photo op on a great day in between rain. And the funds are going through the Ed Foundation to us, but we're very grateful for their support and their commitment to reading. Participated on the VCIC meeting, of which I am a member. And just want to remind you all that we, through that service, we have a learning portal on diversity, inclusion, and equity, and six wonderful models, modules, I'm sorry, which we will be using with our staff as we move forward with it. So again, grateful to that partnership as well. And over the past week, we had the opportunity to meet with our personnel advisory committee, and that was a really good meeting. Some of what you heard with the principals, who talked about some of the things that are going on in the buildings that they shared, some great ideas moving forward about things that we can do to assist them. Later that evening, we met with the parent advisory, and again, another wonderful meeting. And I just want to say kudos to all the folks who are participating and bringing their best thinking to these meetings. They have been great just to hear some of the ideas, some of the thank-yous and the kudos to staff for. kudos to staff for the things that they're doing. And I did not get to attend, but Ms. Reeves did, and that would be our quasi-student advisory committee, and she met with the Lynchburg Rising students, and they are on fire. So a good group of kids, and looking forward to the work that we're going to be doing with them. And I say that to say to the community, if you've learned nothing else from tonight, it is a message to the community about our willingness, our openness to work with you. Again, much of this that we're going through is new for us, and we're just, we're working through it together. But we're here, we're listening. We may not always agree on a course of action, but that doesn't mean that we're not willing to engage in a conversation and some problem-solving and strategies. And I just really appreciate the support that I've received from the community and from our parents and families. And I just have to tell one quick story that just kind of puts it all together for me. So I guess about a week ago, I was in Walmart, and I had two students approach me who were like, okay, we signed up for remote, but we really want to come back to school, you know? And as a superintendent, you're pushing your cart through Walmart, and you hear students who really want to come back to school, and these were high school students who said that. It just warmed my heart, as me and my husband and my mom are all standing there, talking to the kids. And it just showed me, you know, that we are doing some great things for kids. So we are working through that, you know, even as as the principal said, we're being flexible and trying to problem-solve and find that. And I happened tangentially to that, call a principal today about a concern that a parent shared with me, and by the time I hung up the phone, the kid was enrolled in in-person learning. They had worked it all out. So the value of just really talking to our staff and reaching out to them goes a long way, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. You are doing an outstanding job. All right, we will now move forward in agenda to item K, which is board comments. We'll start with Ms. Evans.
I think I've said everything I needed to tonight already.
You've said it all well. Thank you, school board member Evans. Thank you, Ms. Morrison.
I think I've said it all, too, but I do want to make the statement that we, as a board, work very hard to address the needs of all of our families and all of our staff. And we are, we don't do this without investing a lot of time, a lot of time, to make sure that we're doing the best we can. And we've never had a situation like this. We've never had a pandemic. And so we are working through this, and we want everyone to be part of the solution and not create the problems by being, spreading misinformation, which we have seen. So I am grateful for all that you're doing for the students and our staff. I am grateful to have the privilege of working with you. This is a very hard-working board.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. Well said. Dr. Carter?
No, I don't have anything to this time.
Thank you for all you've contributed to tonight. Dr. Nellis?
I just want to reiterate, really appreciate having the high school principals and middle school principals coming out on their own time and giving their, showing they're personally invested and involved, and their staff are with, working with parents and the students to get through this situation. So I think, I want to thank them again, and so.
Thank you, Dr. Nellis. Dr. Senha?
Yes, I'll agree with what everybody else has said, and just to footnote one thing, there is a lot of negativity out there on social media, but there's a small group of people also that are very supportive of our teachers, of our school board, and who often rush to our defense, even as they are frustrated with the situation, they know we're doing the best that we can. And they do offer support and help and guidance for other people. And so there are there are issues with social media, but it does provide a forum for parents to talk to each other about some of the issues. I just wish some parents had more patience and understood that we're all make, not making up, we're all figuring it out as we go, and there are no perfect solutions, particularly in a situation where a lot of your choices just aren't good choices, they're the ones you have. So I appreciate those people.
Thank you, Dr. Senha. Dr. Gupta?
I want to take this moment to thank Dr. Coleman. You know what he's doing as chair? Instead of what is going on on the other side, so he's going through a very difficult time, but he's taken over this job and he's giving his 200% to this job. So thank you very much for what you're doing under very difficult, not COVID-type, other difficult circumstances. And I want to also thank Dr. Edwards for the patience. She talks about patience, and you have a lot of patience. I've seen that in my phone conversations with you. They're not easy, but you are better than my mother. She will throw me out of the house. You still listen, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta. Mr. Harvey?
I would just like to reiterate everything that everyone else has said tonight. And and one of the things that I'm really impressed with with these young folks that we saw behind us today, all of them from our student rep to our to our principals, to to our to our superintendent, to our board chair, it's leadership by example. And that's something that we can all be very proud of in our community, that we've got some great leaders setting some really high examples. And I just, I just, I'm grateful for that, and I'm thankful that we have such a good team that's that's working through COVID, and I'm honored to be going through COVID with you guys. Everybody keeps telling me, you know, that that it's, this is, this is unique, it's never happened like this before. Well, this has been my first year on the board, so, you know, hopefully it gets better. No COVID.
Well, you are doing a tremendous job. Thank you so much, Mr. Harvey. All right, at this time, I'm thankful, Dr. Edwards, for showing us how each of the agenda items are tied to our strategic plan and the objectives. That's a new feature, and we're thankful for that on tonight. I do want to let everyone know that we are moving diligently in several meetings in preparation for many of the things that are forthcoming. I did get an opportunity to talk at length with Senator Warner in his visit the other day, as well as in other settings, and really pushing Chair Evans, all of the things that we are holding dear as positions, and trying to work with the distinguished members of our council and larger public to recognize that Lynchburg City Schools and this school division, far as I'm concerned, is doing one of the most effective jobs at dealing with unprecedented times and delivering education to our children. I want to thank you, Dr. Edwards, and your entire staff, and every member of this board. All of you know that the meetings are much longer now than they were previously, and it is because we are leading with care. Item L, informational items. I think we are all abreast of the fact that the legislative session will be on November the 13th from 9:00 to 10:00. Thank you, Chair Evans, for the leadership you're providing on that. Everyone govern yourself accordingly. School board work session. Please, we're going to prepare for that. We're going to be talking about the SRO, MOU, and then slide into a public budget hearing for community input. All of that is important. The SBA is coming up, and our delicate assembly is on November the 16th, and we're thankful to, Dr. Carter, I believe, is our delicate, and Ms. Morrison is our alternate, and there are activities going on throughout the rest of the week. I'll be working with the student reps on that Tuesday across the Congress around advocacy. I think that's sufficient to be said there. The next school board meeting will be Tuesday, December the 1st, at 5:00 p.m. here in the School Board Administration Building. We want to govern ourselves accordingly for that. All right? Unless there's something else that needs to be said that I am forgetting, is there a motion for adjournment?
A motion.
All right, then, no objection. Meeting is adjourned. Everybody?